Educating, Informing, Serving. Fact TV, Keeping Government Honest.
Be in 6:30 to start the meeting of the Westminster Select Board, March 23rd at 6:30. Any adjustments to the agenda?
I have a cemetery deed under other business that I would like to add.
Anybody else? Except the minutes, February 23rd and March 11th, 2022.
March 11th is not in your packet. I apologize for that. I will put that in next times. So please just do the 23rd.
Just the 23rd.
I move that we accept the minutes of the 23rd as written.
Well, we don't object to the 23rd. I'm looking for my copy of those minutes.
On my side, I have Friday, March 11th. I don't have the 23rd in mine.
Did I mix them?
The emailed packet has the March 11th.
Say that again.
The emailed packet has the March 11th.
I saw it on email.
Okay.
Kevin, do you need?
Yeah, I do need several minutes.
Do you need the minutes?
I have. Thank you very much.
He's reading.
During session, this is Kevin Hughes for the record. I'm a member of the board. I was present at this meeting dated February 23rd, 2023. What I'm not seeing here in the record was a lengthy discussion over an incident that occurred regarding the implementation of the treasurer came, Paul Carlo resigned at the beginning of the meeting. And then there was a discussion to place to get a, to not have an immediate vote on a replacement treasurer or an assistant treasurer, which is the statutory rule from what I understand and how that's supposed to be done. And even at the moment, I don't think we're in compliance with that rule. However, unequivocally, as I look back at the video and recall myself, unless others who are here tonight can tell me otherwise, I said, quote, "That I had a problem with going along with the current recommendation to not have a treasurer appointed by the board." That is not in the minutes. This is, that's a very important piece of information. It was a very lengthy discussion under the treasurer, under this discussion, and I, Mr. Chair, would not, I would request that the minutes have to be amended and table these to be adjusted appropriately to reflect more concretely and more succinctly exactly what went on in that discussion because I don't see it here at all.
I don't believe that was on the reporting, that you had a problem. You're not appointing a treasurer. It's a pretty big item. I will.
Oh, I'm not questioning you.
No, no, I will go back through the reporting. I take some of the reporting that I get here.
Got it.
I can also go back to Fact TV.
Please.
Unless, I totally just missed it, which I don't think I did.
Oh, I am not in any way questioning your veracity.
You can question me all day long.
We had a lengthy discussion.
We did.
Over the appropriate.
You're absolutely right.
What was appropriate, not appropriate as far as who should be the treasurer, given the fact that the treasurer had just resigned. Now, unless someone wants to correct me right now.
Page two, there's a lengthy on C. That's, that's where it would have been and whether the wording is in there that you are seeking. But that's where it should have been.
Right. And it is not. And there was a discussion about the fact that unless someone wants to correct me now, the treasurer, we are statutorily required to appoint a new treasurer. That is the rule. That's how it's supposed to work. And in fact, no member of this board can serve as an assistant treasurer either. But for the, that not we can discuss later, but for tonight's, for this purpose, Mr. Chair, I would ask that we table these acceptance of this, that in my opinion, it is terribly incomplete and does not reflect that discussion. Specifically, my objection to moving forward with what was proposed.
This is too, too, this, this is too reading back, right?
Correct.
Yes.
Yes.
Are you sure you didn't talk about it in this last meeting?
Oh, no. It was that meeting. I actually very clearly recall my response of offering came after Kevin's, as I recall him saying, "I am not comfortable with this. I'm not sure about anybody else of it," is the thing. I agree. And then he continued with his opinion prior to be stated. And I said, "You're just looking for a third party person who's uninvolved," and that was me. But it did come after Kevin stated that he was uncomfortable with that.
All we got to do is just ask for both and period, just not accept the minutes and then go back and correct it. Tell me when to do it. You got something else?
I can agree further. There's a lot of missing content. There was discussions from board members that said, like, quote, "I'd like to see references." There was also discussions about chips, who held them. There was a discussion about the town manager having that chip and the duties for signing, and all of that is missing.
That's in there, under C. That's, it's actually on page three of C.
He is correct, though, that it's missing the commentary asking if there was reference checks or backgrounds.
There is definitely missing content.
Just so that we don't ask or go back and chase their tail, we only ask them for C. Kevin, is that right? The rest of the minutes, I would think, which was all about the treasurer discussion, is what we're asking to do more detail.
Yes, I think that's, that's appropriate. So at this point, Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion that the minutes not be accepted at this time, be tabled until our next meeting.
You have a motion?
We have a motion already.
Okay.
All we got to do is turn it down.
Okay.
Vote on turn down.
Just one quick question. I wasn't present at the meeting, but I watched it on Fact TV. And I thought that it said Mr. Allen was the holder of the chip, the magic chip.
Token.
One of the tokens and not the assistant treasurer, not the signer of the checks.
They did appoint me assistant treasurer interim, assistant treasurer, which last, last couple of sentences, section C, yes.
It was stated, though, not to be a signer, but to be a holder of the chip, basically, so that for whatever reason, I didn't pull both.
You can't have both. So one has to hold the chip and one has to be the signer.
So, but you're assigning, correct?
No. Well, that's a good question. I don't even know anymore.
Yes, you should be.
I'm a signer with you, but a chip would print for check. A token would check. It would just get us through this period of time.
So the motion has no second.
The original motion has a second.
Who did that?
No, the original motion didn't have a second.
It did not. Oh, I thought I heard.
Okay, thank you, Toby.
Toby will second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
I mean, yeah.
Four one?
So we're gonna ask.
We're not accepting the minutes.
We'll table this for now and come back for the next meeting with updated minutes.
And you're gonna come back with the other, the other meeting too.
We should have a motion.
Kevin will take a motion for that.
Mr. Chair, I would now make the motion that we table the minutes from Wednesday, February 23rd, 2022, so that they can be amplified and substantiated and corrected and revisit them again at our next meeting.
I'll second. Motion's made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Table that. Communications and public comments. Do we have anybody other than the two that are listed?
Here.
John's not coming.
John's not coming. We'll deal with him after.
We have a letter from him.
Yeah. Do you want to do that first?
Nope.
Or do just as we're going? All right. So we have discussion with Nimrek, Ernie Saunders, and Willis Sterns.
Yeah, I'm Ernie Saunders.
All right.
I came down mainly because Kevin said there were some questions for Nimrek. And I'm the one that runs the company, so I said, "I'll come down and ask the questions."
What about you?
Well, sir, I have a few. June, just reading. I called the town hall a few months ago now and asked for the current contract, and I got a 2015 current contract, or contract. And I was told that that was the current one, but it states right in there that it has to be revised every 12 months. So with that being said, without going through every single line item of the statement, do you know off the top of your head how much we paid you guys in 2021?
Not off the top of my head, but I have a record of it, and I had heard a number of $40,000. And I said to myself, "No." So I looked it up in the system, and it was $22,000 for that year that I had heard $40,000. I'm not sure what year that was.
So you're stating that in 2021, you have documentation that we only paid you $20,000.
$22,000.
$22,000.
I think it was $22,000.
So is 2015 really the current contract?
It probably is. You know, a lot of times we just, a lot of times those contracts, I haven't seen that one, but it'll say that it rolls over. I don't know if there's a rhyme in there that says that, but.
So I'd like an explanation then to the number that I'm looking at, which is $43,000. Because that doesn't account for $20,000.
Yeah, so I don't know where you're getting your numbers. I'm just going by what we build.
I requested public documents of the expense reports and all documentation that we had with Nimrek as far as contracts. And I was given an expense report for 2021, 2022, and the projections for 2023, which ranged from $43,000 to $41,000.
You were looking at budget line items?
So I'm looking at the total, this says Nimrek total expenses. And the total is $43,000. So I'm not contemplating, like, I'm not questioning whether we gave you $20,000 and $23,000. I'm asking, where's the other $20,000 that's in?
I don't know where those numbers come from, but I'd be happy to send down what we built for that time period.
That would be wonderful. I'm a little frustrated that I had these numbers put in front of me then. Does anybody have an explanation as to where these numbers came from?
You have more than one contractor, is it? So you're doing the listers. Is there confusion over what a total is and what each, each service, you do more than one service for us. You see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
I did, could she be right, and you're only looking at one of the services, and then there's other services?
No, because I'm looking at billing to the town of Westminster. So that would have been the total, including disaster recovery, if you have that, and annual support, W-2 forms, anything that we would have built to the town.
Can I ask, how long has Nimrek been in business?
I started it, you know, I'm a Westminster boy.
Yeah.
Right here, Betty Hoppen was town clerk back then. I started it 36 years ago.
So I have a hard time believing that he showed up to this meeting with inaccurate numbers. But I know that I requested, as a citizen, public documentation, and I was put, this was the piece of paper that was put in my hand. So it's, it's split up as far as what we're paying for what. But regardless, the total number that he's stating and the total number that's on these papers are even.
You know, we just gotta be comparing apples with apples because when you say last year, remember, this town runs on a fiscal year, so is it year, is it last fiscal year or last calendar year? And I don't know which ones I ran them on. I just ran them based on the $40,000 that I had heard.
Yeah, so, I mean, I can only assume if he's keeping proper records, which he likely is, running a business for 36 years, his numbers are probably pretty accurate, which means that we have $20,000 unspoken.
Both, both those years that you're talking about have still not been completed. FY '22, we're in right this second, so they're estimated in a budget.
So what about 2021?
Two, I don't, I don't know if I gave you 2021. Did I?
It's 2021, 2022, and 2023.
Those are actual numbers from our budget from all three years. That's where I got them from.
Okay, so then we have some, a discrepancy that needs to be addressed here of that $20,000.
We, we as a town took $15,000, help me out, folks, $15,000 for training,
finance.
which we never completed. We took, we did some, but we surely didn't go $15,000. But that was in the budget. This year's that's coming up is $7,500. This is by recall. Our assessing is estimated, and it's an estimate because it's by the hour, is estimated to be $22,000, I think, off the top of my head. And they spent, last year, they spent much less than that assessing the town.
So the total assessment services completed by Nimrek appraisal staff will be $20,000. This is included 35 days of appraisal and assessor services.
That's in the contract?
Yes.
Okay.
We, we put in a budget, and it doesn't mean that that's, we actually billed that.
I think that's the point.
You know what I'm saying? When we go to the voters, we ask for this much, and then all of a sudden, there's, we don't, they didn't have enough time to do the listers, all that. So one could be what we actually budget if you took each one, and one would be what he's saying, what did he actually bill us? Because they didn't do as much work as we had originally budgeted.
So I understand that, but if I request, as a public voter, all files and documentation related to the Nimrek contracts, and I'm handed an expense report, and granted, we've had services with them since 2015, I have expense reports between 2021 and 2023.
So 21 would have been the only actuals. The rest would have been budgeted. So you should have had assessment firm spent $10,950?
So I have the email that you sent me.
Yep. So that should be on there as, as the FY '21. '22s are all estimated, and '23s are all estimated because they're in budget. They're not completed, so we can't tell you the actuals spent till the end of the year.
So 2021 is an actual.
That's the actuals.
Okay, so the actual number that's sitting in front of me is $43,000. The number that Nimrek's owner is sitting here telling me is significantly lower than that.
Guess what I want?
So my question is, where's the other $20,000?
Not having the paper.
So I do now. So Nimrek dues are $1,500. Annual disaster recovery was $7,560. Contracted services was $9,800. Financial training was estimated at $15,000. We did not spend $15,000. The assessor was $15,000, and that actually was much less. CAMA MS and cost tables were $1,600.
So what is the actual number?
So it says $43,650 if you add all those up.
Okay, but if the financial training is significantly less, there should be surplus from that that would be shown here.
I'd have to go through.
Of course. Are you adding up the budgeted line or the expense?
That's all I'm doing. Not the actuals.
Not the actuals.
Not the actuals for FY '21. The other two are definitely estimated budgets. But the 21 should have been, should have been honed in just a smidge more. So the assessment firm was $10,950.
Just go back down. Ask them, when you asked them the questions, did you ask them what we actually paid them or what was budgeted?
I asked for all documentation related to our contracts and our payments to Nimrek.
Because you can interpret to your own.
And they're all.
Everything means everything.
They're all in our actual budget, in the operating budget. They're, the listers are up here, and the other modules are all over the place, so in order to get an actual expense, how much we paid for these services.
I just can't believe it'd be that difficult to go back and match up what he's saying himself.
I also feel like that it's.
That's what we actually wrote a check to them for, or we're all done.
Exactly. When it's said and done, they have documentation proving that we wrote them a check for that amount. But when I'm asking about it, I'm being told we paid them this amount, which means somewhere between step one and step three, we lost $20,000 in the mail.
This happens in a lot of towns, though, where they confuse budgeted versus actuated. And there's a big difference. You know, a lot of towns will say, "We had a surplus this year because we didn't spend all the budget," but it doesn't have to do with that. It has to do with, what was your actual revenue? Mine is your actual expense. Budgeting is only a guideline. So it's a possibility that that's contributing to the confusion here.
That's very possible. However, we signed a contract in 2015 for $20,000 in services. And when I, again, as a public taxpayer, requested these expense reports of any type, I was given 2021, 2022, and 2023. So that leaves out 2016, 17, 18, 19, and 20, all of which, I'm assuming, we paid you at least $20,000, which is fine. But that's not on the piece of paper that I was handed, and I was pretty clear about what I was requesting. And then I brought up the fact at another select board meeting that I had only received these three years, and still nobody sent an email. And I'm the treasurer of the town, so my email's very accessible. I was still not sent an email with any of these expense reports. So either there's a huge issue with documentation happening, or they don't exist. But according to our budgeting, we're budgeting to pay you $43,000. Let's pretend it's not an actual number to budgeting. So we're budgeting to pay you $23,000 more than we're contracted to pay you. But there's no other public documentation available of the select board meetings or contracts where we've, where we've handed you these other services, which I believe we probably have. You guys are handling a lot for us. But I find it, excuse my language, absolutely ridiculous that it's not as simple as typing in Nimrek and sending over all the information related to Nimrek. Because I guarantee if I asked Ernie right now, he could probably send me a folder about this thick of the last eight years of information to do with Westminster.
Yeah, the way I would have dealt with that here, to be honest with you, is gone to the accounts payable, Marshall, and just listed, when we say all the checks to Nimrek for that time period, that's the easiest way because over in the budget, it's spread out among a bunch of different accounts. But the information's right in the accounts payable. What did you pay to Nimrek? So that is an easy report to run.
Would that have been in the Sullivan where we get the audit at the end of the year? In the audit, they don't break it down? You know, the folder they send us back where they add?
They don't by our codes.
No, they don't break it down by vendor. They break it down by GL account.
But they're not breaking it down by specific, you know, the time that we sat in this meeting and someone said, "Hey, so we're now gonna up our Nimrek budget and the select board approved this. We're gonna pay them more money." Because you guys have to approve that, right?
We did it, we did it on a Pacific problems, or we would say, all of a sudden, we need more training for the listers, so it wouldn't always be in the budget every year. We would look at whatever problem we were having at that period of time, so, yeah.
Are you referring to breaking down, breaking out the highway like a couple meetings ago, two or three meetings ago?
Well, I'm just referring to like all, so like when we agreed to pay them the $1,400 to separate the accounts. There's documentation that we agreed to that and they agreed to that, right?
Correct.
So if I contact the town right now and I say, "I want to see this documentation," you guys are gonna send me a contract where you agreed and they agreed. This is what they agreed to do. This is what we agreed to pay them. Like that exists?
I don't know that. It only ended that medium we had. And the thing is, if you like the sheriff, we contracted to the sheriff, but then they didn't perform all the work they were supposed to. So in our budget that we asked for, we asked for this much, but they didn't perform the duty, so we never had to pay the amount that we actually had budgeted. And sometimes, that with Nimrek, we would ask them to do something extra, but maybe they didn't bill as much for this other. I mean, what you're asking for is reasonable. I mean, it's just, it's not that, I'm not saying it's unreasonable. It was just, it wasn't like one service they did and we can go back, but I don't know why we can't do what he says and just go find out how many checks we owe each year.
I would think that would be fairly simple.
Yeah. It's right in the, but the town report, I just looked through it. Ernie's very close. I had, with math, $21,900 actually spent versus the $43,000 budgeted. The other two numbers are the best we can do with budget, and they are also correct.
So can you understand my frustration when I ask you what we're spending on a contract? And I'm given half-hearted information.
I should have probably gone to the, to the actual, but I did budget. I think I was asked for what is the budget numbers that we pay Nimrek? What is, what the budgets for Nimrek? So that's what I did.
Do you want to happen to check the email?
I, I'm not doubting you, Cassandra. I'm, I apologize for not being more specific with FY '21, but '22 and '23 are accurate, to the best of our knowledge.
But if we wanted to go back, to answer your question, if we go back to 2019 and 2018, those are long gone. We should be able to pull back those up, history up, that this is what we actually paid them in. Maybe not go all the way.
I can go back 36 years if you want.
How long do you think it would take you to get that?
Well, it happens to be in my own software. You know, this is not unusual that layman boards confuse budgeting with actuals. It's a problem that we have all over the state of Vermont, especially when it comes to determining surpluses and deficits. So it's just that, it's, there's not an accounting knowledge at a lot of municipal houses. I have it, so I can give it to you. I could probably answer a lot of your questions in ten minutes.
So the actual treasurer, if we had one, would be able to go back and run that as well?
Sure, they could run that.
Well, that's funny. It's me, so I could probably run that. So, I mean, most of my questions, in reality, if we're paying them between the $3,000, between what they're supposed to, you know, contracted for, that's a reasonable amount versus the $43,000 that we're budgeting for.
And that's because we, I had this discussion with Russ that when we got involved in doing the lister work, it was at a fixed rate, and I said, "No, let's not do it that way because you're overpaying. Just pay for the hours you lose." So that's what we started to do, and that's running less than what the contract said.
So why are we budgeting somehow?
Because the only way I can answer is, at one time, we didn't have any listers. We had all new listers, and they asked for, for help, for training, and we thought the worst case would be that. They actually, I think if you went back in time, you would find that a couple of years back, we've been higher than what it has been the last few years because they did come in and they did a lot of training and everything. But I think that, yeah, we should have started looking at it. If we keep these same listers on and they're getting that knowledge, well, they don't need, they don't need as much help. We should start to look at, kind of, budget back. It's hard because you, you, you take the worst case scenario, and you take your history, and when we had a year, I think it was like four or five years ago when we. I think it was like four or five years ago, when we lost all three listers, you know, they just went out, we were like, left to start all over again with three listers, and we had to find somebody who would do almost like what you're doing, come in and volunteer and help. And then we asked them to come in and train, and that's what we asked them to do, and the last two or three years has been pretty calm in there. We've only gone through maybe one out of the three, and it's, uh, they get, they only get a little bit of the training, and they're, we seem to have worked it out.
So FY twenty was at twenty two thousand, FY twenty one was at twenty two thousand. Uh, this year we're at fifteen, and next year we're at fifteen, so we have taken into consideration that it's, the services are not um, at that twenty two thousand dollar level anymore.
And that's our goal, we, we wanna, we wanna get out of the picture, we wanna build the expertise within your town.
Anybody else? Jim?
Um, I called around to a few area towns, um, and that, and that use your program, and they were telling me that they're not real confident with it, with the security, and that it's a little outdated. And I was wondering if you could speak a little bit about that, and then I saw some lawsuits and settlements and stuff. I was wondering if you could.
What do you mean some lawsuits?
Um, there was one that you'd settled for thirty thousand dollars. Um, where does that come from? Um, but I was wondering, well, if you could just talk to the area, uh, to the outdated, um, program and the security of your program.
Yeah.
Um.
There, there was a thirty thousand dollars settlement that I did with, uh, that's a, it's a long complicated story, but let me give you the short version. A competitor of ours convinced the deputy attorney general in Vermont that they should look at NIMRAC, do a deep dig on NIMRAC's security, because every town uses our software. And, and, and when it's older software, there's no doubt about it, so they decided that, okay, we'll do that, so they hired a professor at Champlain College to do a deep dive, and they really did a deep, they looked at everything, and they did find a few things that we immediately tightened up. Now, they weren't major things, our, all of our personal information was encrypted, which means that you couldn't just look at somebody's social security number, but it wasn't encrypted to the level, to the military standard level that they would like to see, so. So it improved our system and made it tighter. And then, they, they had to pay that professor about thirty thousand dollars, and the attorney general said to me, well, that's, that's a good price for a deep security audit, why don't we just settle on that? And I kinda was against it because I said, you didn't find anything, and we never had a breach. You're only supposed to go after a company, and they've gone after many, I mean, finally, I felt like one of the big boys, because if all of those get breached, we didn't have any breach. But, so I hired an attorney in Vermont, the, the only good cybersecurity attorney, and he said to me, you could beat this in court. You wanna take the attorney general to court? And I said to him, how much are you going to cost? He said about a hundred and eighty thousand. And I said, I'll give him the thirty thousand that he paid the Champlain College professor, it was a good deep dive, we did tighten things up because of it. But, you know, I, I don't like the idea of it, you're going after this small company that can't afford a hundred and eighty thousand dollar attorney fee. And I pointed out that QuickBooks has some of the same issues, why don't you go after them? Intuit's got plenty of money, but no, they weren't gonna do that. But they did, they had some, some of the things they found in our software, for example, we allowed a, a user not to have a password. If they didn't want a password, they could delete it and not have a password. QuickBooks did the same thing, and QuickBooks is a worldwide system. But um, we changed that, we made it so you have to have a password now, because for security reasons, you should have a password. And of course, our customers hated it. I didn't have to use a password, now you're making me use a password, so, you know, you can't win, so to speak, but so that was the story about that, and I'm kinda glad it happened, because it did tighten things up. I hired two more, two new programmers, ones, they're both out of state, one's in Arkansas and one's in New York, but they're working on upgrading our Fox Pro software to a, a new dot net language. And we've got one module out, we'll be coming out with additional modules. Um, we have to have an annual security audit now, which costs about twenty thousand dollars. But they take a look every year to make sure, so, you know, I'm convinced that we're secure, we've never had a, a, a breach, and our stuff is tight, and it's actually, our cloud stuff is even tighter. Um, but it's actually, because we have an older language, believe it or not, it's even tighter, because people don't go, hackers don't go after the older languages, they go after the newer languages. So I have no qualms about our system being secure. It hasn't been breached, there's no personal information that, available to anybody. And we are on a track to improve it to a new language. Remember, we're a small company, we're, it's hard to be a little company and play this game now, because all of my competitors are huge. And they all wanna buy NIMRAC, but I don't wanna do it, cause I've worked with Vermont towns forever, and I understand what the scale is. And I don't want them to come in and turn the screws and have Vermont towns be paying seven times, you know, when we replaced Rutland City, we saved Rutland City a million dollars in five years, just in support, and they told me they liked the system better. So I don't wanna sell it to a big company.
The towns that I did talk to said your support was magnificent.
Yeah, it is. We have ex-town treasurers, we have, well, Chip Sterns is, is an example, he used to be a town manager, he was a finance director. All of my staff knows what's going on in Vermont towns.
He can take, he can take good.
We understand the scale, which a lot of these out-of-state companies, they, they don't, you know, when you start talking about a town the size of Athens, they say, well, let me talk to your risk mitigation specialist.
Yeah.
But I don't know of any, when you said lawsuits, that wasn't even a lawsuit, that was actually a settlement which could have been a lawsuit, but I didn't wanna pay it. But there hasn't been any other lo- lawsuit, I heard of, I heard somebody here say that Town of Springfield had a lawsuit against them, but that's not true. There's never, there's never been anything with Springfield, and there's nothing, I even called Jeff Mobus and said, do we have a lawsuit with you guys? And he said, not that I know, but you'd be the first one I would call if there was, so. So I don't know where rumors like that, that's one reason I wanted to come down in person. Because everybody in the state of Vermont knows that I love local government, and I want people like you to participate. I think it's very important, and I admire what you're doing, but whatever you say has to be true. You can't say things that aren't true. Cause that undermines local government, and I'm against that.
Well, I appreciate you being so forthcoming about the, the deep dive. Um, I'm glad to hear that you guys, uh, had no issues and no leaks. Congratulations.
Yeah, thanks.
I that's all I really have to say about that.
So I have for you guys, I have questions on the printer.
Two, uh, two weeks ago at the meeting, is this, is this law from VLCT, or is this just?
I think that's the same, I think that's the same from VLCT, yes, I have the same one from VLCT.
So we were told that it was legal for Craig to be the assistant treasurer, and here it says, it's not.
Where, what's that got to do with NIMRAC?
We were, Chip told us that it was legal for you to do that.
And he also said that Russ could sign checks, which, that's not.
It's clearly stated you can't.
Well, the town manager can be assistant treasurer, but a select board member cannot.
Correct, they don't say that right here.
The town manager cannot be treasurer.
No, but they can be assistant treasurer, and they can sign checks, and that's happening, like Town of Middlebury, we're working with them because the treasurer had, had a stroke. And the town manager is currently the assistant treasurer and is signing checks, and that's worked well, so it was actually my advice to have Westminster have Russ be assistant treasurer until you found one. But I know that the select board can be.
And that was not the proposal.
I can interject. My man, Mr. Chair.
Pleasure.
Again, thank you for being here. You just said, I wanna, I don't ever wanna put words in anyone's mouth. But, do you know how long your company's been in this town, or been working as the town's primary? Do you have any idea how many years?
Well, like I said, Betty Holton was town clerk. It was, I think we probably started Westminster, started computerizing them in nineteen eighty eight.
Okay. And, um, I wanna thank you for what you said about answering the question on the all, all of us make mistakes, I'm not saying you did. Um, on lawsuits, just because someone makes a claim or whatever, uh, doesn't necessarily mean it's true. And when you're the small guy, and the big guys should be looking elsewhere, I really wanna thank you for the, your answer, because I found out the date. Not just honest, but, uh, kinda the way it is. All right, and I don't think it shows any reflection on your company. I would say this though, and again, this is not a reflection, you just said that it's very important that everything be true. So what Chuck just said, do you have a representative here that maybe had said something to us that, let's say, maybe wasn't accurate? Or should have been accurate, given his experience? Given how many, you know how many employees you have?
Do I know how many I have?
Yeah.
What's that do, twenty seven?
Twenty seven. Um, do you have a formal training program for all these people?
I do.
And the last thing is, um, you're familiar with relationship management training? When, uh, you know, you have representatives out there in the world, whether you're a small company or a big company. I come from the old school, and I'm a taxpayer here, that the customer is always right. Um, a lot of people don't believe that anymore. Uh, but I pay the tax in this town along with other people. And, um, I would expect, as I do in my own company, that when we are out there facing the public, every one of our employees treats everyone with respect, especially a client or a future client. Um, and at no time without exceptions tries to make them feel either inferior or give them the impression that we're bullragging them. And that's how I run my company. Um, relationship management training is something that's obviously new. It's important, and the one observation I've had as the former chair is, the only thing that I would say here, um, and I'm speaking for myself only, is that when anyone works for the town, is a contractor or in any other position, I would expect they would treat every member of this board and vice versa with a level of respect and, um, understanding, uh, at all times. Because we represent the taxpayers, yeah, we're laymen, but some of us, you know, have been reading spreadsheets and doing P and L's for over three decades. And just because it's a, it's, it's a small town in Vermont, and not a huge or large branch from Morgan Stanley or Smith Barney, okay, I can read a spreadsheet. Um, and when we ask for a question, it shouldn't take nine months to get an answer. I wanna know the difference between how money is used in the general fund, can we use monies in the general fund? And I believe that's something that your company, correct me if I'm wrong, holds itself as an expert to do, that you can explain to us what we legally can or cannot use as far as the money that we have, approved or not approved by taxpayers. Am I wrong in that assumption?
Well, I won't, we've, I gotta use that old crutch that we're not attorneys. So I never tell a town what they legally can do, I say, talk to an attorney, but we do understand what best practices are. And we do try to encourage all of our clients to use best practices, however, when I started NIMRAC, I said, the software's not gonna run you, you're gonna run the software, so I don't wanna tell a town that they have to do something. But we will say, this is the best practice, and we encourage you to do it. Uh, but I won't go down that legal path, I think that was where Chip wasn't, he wasn't clear on whether legally a select board member could be an assistant treasurer. He wasn't clear legally, so those questions sometimes do flow over into, you gotta ask an attorney.
No question, and I, and I'm, I'm gonna leave it at that, I'm saying, as you said, and I'm, I'm not trying to, you said that we're laymen, and that laymen don't really understand.
Well, no, I didn't say that, I said it's common among Vermont municipalities because there are laymen on the boards, that they confuse budgeting with actuals, and that's very common, I don't know how many places I've been where they, they say we had a surplus this year because we didn't spend the budget. Well, that doesn't matter whether you spent the budget or not, and that's what I mean by the layman, I'm not particularly saying you don't understand accounting, because we get people that do, we get CPAs on boards, you know, so we do get that situation. But in general, we're, we're willing, and I love this, we're willing to trade off efficiency for democracy in Vermont, and I think we probably have the purest form of democracy in the world, right in this state. And I don't care if we're trading off efficiency, and it comes and goes. Sometimes both boards are very knowledgeable about accounting, and at other times, I watch them when their auditor talks to them and their eyes glaze over, so we definitely have that, those variations out there.
Sure, well, um, I do wanna thank you for all the fine work that you've done over the many years to make Westminster in compliance and meet best practices. I would simply observe, in my own experience, and speaking only for myself, that, um, relationship management training is very important, no matter what size your company is.
You know, I'm, I'm, I'm with you, I don't know what your business is, but I run my company. I said, we can be successful and accomplish the goals that I have, which are really to help keep local government local. We can do it with two words, and one word is knowledge, and the second word is kindness. And if we use those two things, and kindness gets into your respect area, we'll blow our competitors out of the water, because I don't see enough of that out there. The best thing I can hear somebody say about NIMRAC is when they say, boy, I like working with those people, they're really nice, and then somebody else says, and they know what they're doing. That means you got those two things.
And thank you for clarifying that, thank you very much, that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Uh, I'm just gonna follow along with the best practice comment. I'm new to this, twenty eight years old. Google gave me my manual because my town didn't. But it does say pretty clearly that the highway fund and the general fund under no circumstances should be in the same account. So I respect thirty six years of knowledge and experience. Do you believe it's best practice that those two accounts are combined?
Well, there's sometimes you gotta be careful of the words, but they should not really be in the same fund the way they are in this town, and I'll tell you the reason. The law is different for what happens with a general fund surplus. If it's a surplus in the general fund, and again, a surplus is revenues minus expenses, to heck with the budget. If it's a surplus, it's supposed to go back to the people when they set the tax rate for the next year.
Yes.
If it's the highway fund and it's a surplus, it can carry, be carried forward. And that's why you need to make sure that you separate the general fund and the, and the highway fund, as well as all these other little funds.
So I, I'm aware of that, you've been involved with us since two thousand fifteen, how long has our funds been combined?
Up until yesterday.
So when did that, so.
Yeah, it is, so separating.
I, I did it yesterday.
So when did that, when did those two funds become combined?
I think they probably always, always.
They always were.
Probably always have been, yeah.
You've been here since nineteen eighty eight. You've been here since nineteen eighty-eight. Those two funds have always been combined. Even though it's clearly listed in the treasurer's manual, those funds should not be in the same account.
And we've been telling them ever since that they ought to split them out. We're not going to force them, but we've been telling them.
And I can attest to, we've had numerous treasurers. Because I've been dealing with the treasurer since Earl of the Fever. And we've had probably a dozen or more. And some of them are popularity folks. Some of them know what they're doing. Some of them don't.
Well, I don't even really know what I'm doing, but I can tell you that I find that to be extremely negligent that we have had our finance professionals telling us this should not be this way and it's taken us until yesterday to figure it out. And we've been paying them a pretty good amount for a really long time. And we had to pay them again to separate it. So.
Also, we were told two years ago to give what was surplus back, when really it wasn't surplus. If you look, it was highway money, it was your state aid money, and it was money that was paid back through grants. And we gave it back to the taxpayers, so.
And that's highlighting the point that I was making.
Right, but we were told to do that by some of your employees. You're hounded to do it, not told, not asked, hounded to do it. You can look back. Do you, do you watch any of these meetings?
Yeah, well, you know, people tell me that I need to get away, but I don't really watch them. I listen to them though. I do listen to them after they've already happened. You know, when I'm working at my desk, I'll listen to them. And yeah, I have.
Well, I think, I, I just, I'm listening to all of this, but I think this year, we, as far as I can tell, we are planning to separate those accounts.
Separate it as of yesterday?
Yeah, so that's fine. I don't think we need to be too, yes. You know, as long as we're going in the right direction and we appreciate the fact that you're, you know, finding things that are good to find. We should do it and not talk about it all the time, you know.
That's my only issue is that it seems that we've been talking about it for quite a while.
I think you're making the, I think you are making the situation move. And I think that's good. And so let's just, you know, assume that this is where we're going.
What's good, Cassandra, is, and this is, still exists in a lot of towns. And what they'll say is, we've always done it that way. And it's, so it's just that momentum of always doing it that way. I love it when somebody comes along and says, we're going to do it the way it should be done. So that's a good thing. If Westminster is changing that, it should have been changed a long time ago.
The hard part, and I've been here for way too long. The hard part is what drives this whole town is that book at the end of the year. Go back to fifteen, twenty years ago, I kept bringing that up. Where the voters were giving us a hard time, they wanted to be able to look at the book and compare it to the next year compared to the next year.
Yeah, you're right.
Somewhere along the line, we had to say, let's stop, let's do it. We did the same thing with the school where we're going, let's pull the school out because nobody can understand all these numbers. No, we want to see it. We want to see it the way it is so we can go back and compare. So the answer to your question, yes, every time we turn around, we're going like, well, once we do this major change, when they go see the yearbook, next year, they're going to look at it and go, how come we don't, we can't follow these numbers? Because they're not going to line back up again, you know? That was the argument. So it wasn't always the select board, it was just getting the voters to go along with, hey, when you see this book, unfortunately, you're going to need to go two or three years before you understand what Chuck's highway funds are going to be able to define each one of the lines. We thought we're getting to a point where now finally we're going to do it. Next year, we'll, we'll have to take a lot of questions when we hand in that book because it's not going to look the same.
I would assume if you explain to the voters though, this is to ensure that there is no misappropriation of funds.
Yeah.
Highway funds are spent on the highway, general funds are spent on the general, and if those are two separate accounts, there's no confusion.
I, I think finally we got to a point where people were understanding, yes.
So to piggyback on to Toby, I don't want to assume things are getting done anymore. I think we should keep pushing it along and making sure, maybe not every meeting, but every, so often we just keep pushing it along and making sure it's getting done. Review it, yeah, go over it, make sure, talk with Chip, how's it going? Do we, are we looking all right? You know, that kind of thing.
Your first review was supposed to be next meeting.
Okay.
In which it will be.
Okay.
Did it today. It's got some kinks that we still need to work out.
And that whole review, I mean, also is other things, not just this, just in general. We talk a lot of stuff and then it kind of gets pushed off and I think we need to just make sure we Larry, sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, no, you didn't. I didn't come here, wasn't asked to come here this evening to address your budgetary issues or the process, but if I may, I'd just like to make a comment based on the conversation you just heard. Because I think it's a very productive conversation. I've been representing municipalities for forty years, a number of towns in addition to Westminster various times in my career. And I can tell you that there is a wide variation amongst our two hundred and forty-plus towns in Vermont on how they handle both the budget and how they handle your surplus and your general appropriation articles between both the general fund appropriations and the highway fund appropriations. A number of towns still put them together and Westminster's done that for many years. And on the appropriation side, when you go to town meeting. And there's, to my mind, at least the attorneys that train in municipal law, that's not unlawful, but it may not be best practice. Some towns now separating their appropriation articles, the general fund appropriations, and then they have a highway fund appropriation. And so that is becoming more commonplace, but there's still a number of towns that do not do that. The, you know, we're always struggling to provide the transparency and clarity that the voters want. And that's the ultimate objective. And I think Westminster's improved through the years and I think they're working real hard with Nemrick and with your leadership on the board to get to that level. So I think that's a real positive thing. I just want to, you know, again emphasize Westminster, when a lawyer's trained in municipal law, the first thing is that if there is a surplus, the revenue's over expenditures. As Ernie just said, we've always been taught in our first rule, because you're never going to get in trouble, it's the money of the voters. A surplus is the money of the voters. And even if it's not required, it's been my consistent advice, because I like to be conservative when I'm counseled to a town. If you've got a surplus, ask your voters what they want to do with it. And so even though Ernie says it may be able to be carried over, it's not as clear in my mind in the law that that's what you should always do. But it is very clear in my mind that you'll never get in trouble by asking the voters what to do if you have extra funds, whether it be in general fund or whether it be highway. And as a select board, I've always said, don't ever presume that you can do what you want with the money. If you have any questions, you go to the voters. If you need to, you hold a special meeting. And that's served me well as an attorney for many years. Some of the towns think that's a bit too conservative. But when the towns follow that advice, they don't get in trouble and they don't have a lawsuit. So I think the town right now is doing a wonderful job in terms of its process. Every town can improve.
Sure.
And I think, you know, these guys work hard in the, you know, day-to-day trying to guide, you know, two hundred and forty-one towns. I'll tell you, nobody has the same system. They may be using Nemrick, every town does something a little bit different. I've got seven towns that I'm counseled to, every one of them does, does it different. Okay? And that's the only thing I want to leave with you. So I, I'd like to see it more positive. I think you guys are going in a positive direction. And it's good to ask tough questions, but keep your heads up and, 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 and keep in mind that every step you're taking is improving the process of the administration and transparency in this town. I appreciate that.
I want to thank you for everything that you have done while I've been here.
You're welcome.
You've been exceptional, always there for us and really appreciate everything you do for our town.
Thank you, Ken. All right. I'm sorry to hear about your mom.
Yes.
I didn't know how many you guys knew about. Thank you very much.
Very sorry.
Yeah, thank you very much. Anything else on Nemrick discussion at this time?
I just have a question. Does the Nemrick discussion and the treasurer slash finance director, does that come later?
Yes.
Okay, all right, then I'll move on.
All right, so we're good with Nemrick discussion under Communications Public Commons, John Jones. We got an email that he wasn't going to make it tonight, but we do have a letter of resignation.
Oh, excuse me, I can just, I'd like to actually go back up north. So I'm going to leave, but I think Chip might be staying for that other discussion.
He's your designated hitter?
He lives close.
I'm just a pitcher.
Yeah.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ernie. I really appreciate it. Nice seeing you again. So we have a letter of resignation from John Jones. Can you read it out loud?
You should.
Greetings, select board officials. I wanted to take the time to write, support, to write to you, support my resignation from the ARPA and WCECD committee. Additionally, I would also request that my resignation from WRC be accepted at this time. I also will not be able to make tonight's meeting to address the board. Warm regards, John Jones. So I guess we'll take a motion to accept resignation from these three different committees and boards?
I'll make a motion after we accept and submit into records this letter from John Jones showing that he wants to resign from the ARPA, the WCECD committee, and also the WRC committee.
I second.
Move and seconded? Any comments or anything? All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
All those opposed? Uh, hi, sorry. Passes. Yeah, I have it.
Does he want to address the board in a later phase or is he just done?
He has a right to.
Good. If he does, we'll deal with that. Unfinished business. A Hartley Hill Road update. Fletcher Proctor, who's not here.
I'm digitally here.
Sorry about that.
I'm virtually here.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Fletcher. I'm sorry. I didn't realize you were there.
I've just been lurking.
The floor is yours.
Well, I was just hoping to get some idea where things stand with this, this proposal that the town take over that road. You know, we've been through a number of issues. You know, I did a good bit of research in the land records and managed to pull together an account of how the road was left out when the Hartley Hill development was done. And using that, come up with a viable description of the piece of property that is that stretch of Hartley Hill that, I guess it's, I don't want to get into legal issues over whether it was discontinued correctly or not. We'll just assume it's a private road for now. But we got a decent description of it from a legal standpoint, I think. We sort of, we taking care of the scary Boston lawyer issue, I think. The liability issue came up when, the last time we spoke about this. So after that meeting on my way to work, I drove out four different roads that I know had, became unmaintained at some point. I came off of Hartley Hill onto Kimball Hill from the north end of that. That you get to the point, well, you get to a point in there that it's not clear to me why it's at that point, other than how the people on that road feel about it. But it says only authorized vehicles pass that point. Well, I don't know if it's a public right of way, if it's a town road and I, my understanding is class four road. I don't know what, what the legal status of that is, but the Windmill Hill Road, when you come down the north end of that, you get to a point where there's two signs. There's a really almost illegible sign that it's saying that it's a town trail. And then there's a newer sign that says no motor vehicles beyond that point. And as far as I can tell, there's five or six residences beyond that point. So I don't know how people get to their house if they can't use their car. And three or four of them are, are year-round residences. So I don't know what the significance of that no motorized vehicles sign is. The Old Athens Road up beyond where Toby is, that has a sign that somebody's been keeping it up because it's been hand repainted that says that it's a town trail. Of course, the point at which the sign is posted saying it becomes a town trail, it actually doesn't become a town trail at that point. It's a little ways further on. But it says that, and it warns people that the road is not maintained. The, the one I liked the most was the Goddard Hill Road, the south end of Goddard Hill Road. When you get to the point where it ceases to be a maintained public road, there's nothing. There's a wide space in the road clearly there for the town truck to turn around when it plows. But there's no sign that says anything. So in terms of, you know, the issues of town liability for somebody wandering out a non-maintained road seems as if there's no consistent policy in the town. But it also seems to me that the point of it really is that if the town, if it's, if it's no longer a maintained road and the town posts that, then basically anybody who wants to drive beyond that post, that, that point does so at their own risk. Or, and at the very least, I'd say that might be a good thing to put on the sign, say pass at your own risk. So I'm not sure that the liability issue is as, as big as it seemed to be at our last discussion. But basically, my process is I'm just trying to identify what the impediments to getting first that fifty-foot-wide strip of land that is the private section of Hartley Hill into the ownership of the town. Because right now, well, I did, I did some work with Jeff Morse on this. He, he represents Sir Sosmo in general, that, that business as well as I think does work for Butch Sir Sosmo. And we traced it down under the residuary clause in Tony Sir Sosmo's will that the ownership of that piece of property passed to his trust. The trust is still in existence, the Anthony Sir Sosmo Trust. Butch is, Dominic is the trustee of the trust. And he's, I sent Jeff a copy of the deed that I had drawn based on the property description I was able to develop. And Butch is perfectly willing to sign off on that as the trustee of the trust. So I know that Craig had raised the issue of if it were to be really taken over as a town road, there'd have to be a survey of it. I'm, I don't know that that would be a huge expense to the town because there is the existing survey that was done for the Sir Sosmo subdivision. And you can come up with a complete meets and bounds description of the piece of property. So, I mean, it's obviously from a survey, oh, I think it was late seventies, around nineteen eighty. So it, it might need some updating, but all the numbers are there. Just probably needs to be recalibrated to magnetic north again. So really, what I, what I wanted to have a discussion with the board about is what's, what else is standing in the way? I mean, we're, we're trying to knock down all the impediments. I'm happy to see that Mr. Slayson's in the audience today. I'm hoping he might have some observations about the status of that road and, and what the pros and cons of the town taking it over. I mean, frankly, I just think it, it's been an issue I mean, frankly, I just think it's been an issue for as long as I've been involved in town governance. I've been hearing this issue of the Hartley Hill Road come up since, I think, first time I heard it in any detail was when Ruth Grandy was the head lister and she brought it up to the Select Board that something needed to be done about it. I mean, right now, basically, you've got what is private or public, it's being used by a lot of townsfolk. And it is, its ownership, frankly, it's not going to get any simpler when Dominic passes away and we don't know what happens to that trust. It really just seems to me it makes sense for the town to take control of that piece of land. Then the question is whether the town chooses to declare it to be a public road. And I don't think the two issues are necessarily the same, but I'd be real interested to hear if Mr. Slayson has some observations.
Do you want to speak to that?
I'd be happy to. So Fletcher, good evening, and thank you. I'm glad that you're present this evening remotely. You'd be proud of us, Fletcher. I've got here, I'm going to hand out to the Select Board momentarily, a 10-page memorandum, which I can email you tomorrow. And I've presented to the town manager a three-ring binder with the memorandum and then all the source deeds and documents and historical records, at least to the extent that we've located them, which back up some of the discussion in the memo. And hopeful that binder can serve as a resource as we go forward. And as I hand these out, I'd also like to acknowledge Fletcher's tremendous work and the time he's put in, because his work formed the foundation of a lot of the memorandum and the discussion of the issues that are contained in the memorandum I'm handing to each of the board members tonight. And Russ, yours is in your notebook? I have one right here.
Do you want to spare?
I do. And I've got one I have to follow. There's a pile of them on the table.
Oh, did you make some additional?
I put 10 additional ones on the table. And I know you've got a lot of business to still get through tonight, so my purpose will be to highlight some of the issues and then possibly outline or make a recommendation of how we go forward. And I would welcome working with Fletcher and welcome his experience, both as an experienced attorney, but also having done a lot of research in the land records on these issues.
Can I point out, in 1957, when I was a selectman, I voted against it?
There you go. Well, that's one of the issues that's discussed in the memorandum, the discontinuance. But as Fletcher correctly points out, the issue of whether the section of private road should be declared a public town highway has been discussed several times through the years. And this memorandum highlights some of those discussions, but if you follow with me a bit here, if you go to page two, the Hartley Hill subdivision discussion, what, especially the last two paragraphs, what happened was, of course, that Sir Sosmo and Patton were conveyed that large tract of land on Hartley Hill. They got it from a couple of different sources. And once they owned that large tract of land, they proceeded to subdivide it into a number of lots. That's well-known to you, and it was called the Hartley Hill subdivision. And it's more particularly described in survey maps, which you have here on record, Sheets 1 through 4, and they're provided in that three-ring binder that your town manager has. And in that binder, it also shows the layout of Hartley Hill Road and where the public way ends, where the private section begins and ends, and extends, of course, from the Westminster side into Saxton River Village. Now, the plan of development, and I agree with Fletcher entirely in this, the plan of development of Hartley Hill was when Patton and, or Sir Sosmo and Patton conveyed each lot to a buyer. They also conveyed to each buyer a right-of-way for ingress and egress over the private section of road, connecting the two public sections, connecting Westminster End and the Village of Saxton's River End. And each deed uniformly provides that the right-of-way shall continue until such time as the grantors, meaning Sir Sosmo and Patton, until such time as they, their heirs or assigns, deed the private road to the town of Westminster, at which time the right-of-ways cease and determine. You don't need a right-of-way anymore if it becomes a public highway. And so that was the plan of development. And that does uniformly appear. And we resisted this, I shouldn't say we, the town has resisted this over some years because in order to research all the deeds, review the language, and make sure that uniformly appears, took a lot of time. And Fletcher Proctor put in that time, and he should be thanked for that. What I've done is then reviewed a number of the deeds he's provided and a few additional deeds that I sought to review, and was able to confirm that language uniformly appears. So the conclusion that I believe we're reaching here is that title to that section of private road was retained by Sir Sosmo and Patton. Patton's interest was subsequently conveyed to Sir Sosmo. Deed research suggests, then, that the private road vested in Anthony Sir Sosmo at the time of his death would have been an asset of his estate. And you've just heard from Fletcher that he has consulted with attorney for Sir Sosmo, Jeff Morse, and they believe they can trace that asset to a trust, the Sir Sosmo Trust. So ultimately, any quitclaim deed, quitclaim meaning you give up whatever rights you have, any quitclaim deed would need to name either Dominic as trustee or specifically name the trust. But it certainly is something to consider and something that certainly should be one of the steps the town considers if it's going to take over that road. So all of that work done by Attorney Proctor has been very meaningful, very helpful. The other thing we've done is look at the warranty deed from Joseph Walsh to Robert Bonds. And Mr. Bonds is steadfastly, that remained of the, you know, view over the years, that he did not want the road taken over as a public highway. But he's never once referred or directed the town to a deed in which he was granted a fee interest or a property interest in the road. And so we've done some of that same research. Fletcher has, and I've gone and done some additional. And when Mr. Walsh conveyed property to Mr. Bonds, he did it in a cumulative deed. And that deed and all the sub-deeds appear on Pages 3, 4, 5, and 6 of your memo. And it's called Robert Bonds, change the title. So he got property that was set forth in six separate deeds. And so Mr. Joseph Walsh was conveyed a right-of-way. He had a right-of-way. He conveyed that same right-of-way to Robert Bonds. And in every one of the deeds, the Walsh to Bond, it mentions that also include conveying to the grantor a right-of-way running between Town Highway 31 and Town Highway 15, a right-of-way. We're not conveying the fee interest, the title in the underlying road, but a right-of-way, right-of-way in D2, 3, 4, 5, 6. Won't bore you, you can read it, but every one of the deeds confirms that it was a right-of-way, a right-of-way to use the property owned by someone else, and that was Sir Sosmo and Patton. So that leads us to that point. Now, Sir Sosmo and Patton believed they owned that section of road because they believed that it had been lawfully discontinued in 1957. Because, of course, they didn't come along and get ownership until much later in the 80s, in 90s, when they're making these conveyances. So they thought that when they got all that property from Eck Community and from the other, what's the other large landholder up there? Bear with me for a minute. It was Eck Community and Lincoln Land Corporation. When they got all that land, of course, the discontinuance procedure had already taken place back in 1957. Russ was kind enough to make those records available to me and reviewed those records. Those are in the binder. And I quote in the memorandum on Page 7, the order of the Select Board at that time and the section of road they specifically discontinued. Again, that's on Page 7. And it appears to me, and Ruth Grandy would probably have all the history down, but H.W. Carstens Jr. apparently owned a farm at one end and a homestead or a farm at the other end. He wanted it to become private. He said he'd maintain it and let folks pass through it to get to Saxton's River, as long as it became re-private, and it was proved. And the notice of closure was sent to the adjoining landowners. The interesting question, and it's only a question lawyers could love, but the real intriguing question is, after the Select Board went through this whole process, there's a case that went to the Supreme Court right at the same time, the Madison case, construing the identical statute about either reclassifying or discontinuing town highways. And that statute's quoted at the bottom of Page 8. And in the Madison case in the Supreme Court, the Supreme Court said, "The selectmen in Manchester and Sandgate had done the same thing. They'd given up a road that extended between two towns." And the Supreme Court says, "You don't have authority, Select Board. If a road runs between two towns, it has to be discontinued or reclassified by this court." Back in those days, called the county court. Now, I'm old enough to remember, when I started practicing law, I practiced law in Wyndham County Court. We had county courts. We didn't have all these superior courts and all the different divisions. Well, that court had the jurisdiction in 1957, and that, the court was the only court of jurisdiction that could have given up that road. So the act of the selectmen, if it was indeed a lawfully created town highway back in the 1800s, the action by the Select Board in 57 had no force in effect. So that's another interesting question. What does that mean? It may well mean that this has always been a town highway. It's just people thought they owned it. Sir Sosmo and Patton relied on the discontinuance. Folks thought they had a right-of-way over it. Mr. Bonds claims at times he's owned it. I mean, and that's why the whole process has been the subject of a lot of discussion, but no resolution. And we're at a point, as Fletcher suggests, it's probably, you know, we should get over that and resolve it. Now, we don't know, I don't know as I sit here, and maybe Fletcher knows, but I have not done the research because it's arduous and it can be expensive. I've been involved in road litigation with other municipalities, and it's nothing I recommend that you lightly get into. Because to do the research to prove that you've got a town highway at times is very complex and involved. And I've given you the acts, the various highway acts that Vermont adopted in the late 1700s through 1839. Now, I'm guessing Hartley Hill would have been approved, if at all, at some point in that period of time, but I don't know that. You have to go to each specific act to identify the specific requirement in place at the time. Our Vermont Supreme Court has made that very clear. You have to identify the act and make sure that it was complied with in all respects. And so I'm not telling you today, I don't know whether or not Hartley Hill or any portion of it was ever lawfully created as a town highway. I don't know that. Now, how do you create a town highway? We have in Title 19, the Vermont statutes have a very clear process called the statutory procedure. It's in the 19 DSA Section 700 section of how you go, of how you take over, how you lay out a town highway. And that's an option open to the town. There's also a legal process called dedication and acceptance. There are a number of cases in Vermont who have found that roads through the years were dedicated by the owners and that accepted by the towns as a town highway. And if the town spends money to repair and maintain those, there's an implied acceptance. And so if the owner of the road, let's say, for example, the Trust, Sir Sosmo Trust, dedicates it or quitclaims it, and I would work with Fletcher, because I think it should be, words of dedication should be in there, dedicate it, and if the town were to accept that deed and continue to expand monies, that's another way to potentially accept a town highway. What I'm suggesting you think about, remember earlier I said I'm a conservative municipal attorney? And there may be ways to do things, there may be, it may be possible to accept a quitclaim deed from the Sir Sosmo State. But what I'm thinking is this, that the deed from Sir Sosmo Trust would be one step in the process. I think Fletcher's done a great job in outlining what the description of that roadway may be, because he backed into it by the dimensions of the lots that were conveyed. And he used those dimensions, the lot, and piecemealed it all together. And that was a wonderful effort, okay? And it's all set forth in that proposed quitclaim deed. So I think we considered that deed, but I also would recommend that since, I'm not a land surveyor, and I don't think Fletcher would hold out that he is either, and I think he'd probably welcome the suggestion, if the town can afford it, to have a land surveyor review the proposed road description in that deed and compare it against the subdivision meets and bounds and survey lines, and use the same process that Fletcher did, and just get an opinion of a land surveyor. Does that meets and bound description roughly provide a roadway of approximately 50 feet in length for the length, the road length that we would be interested, the town might be interested in accepting? Because if it does provide a reasonable dimension of 50 foot, you don't have to go to the expense then of having a detailed survey, which is very expensive. You know, that's where you could possibly use the work of the surveyors before that were done along the boundaries of the various lots that bordered the road. The next step I would ask you to think about, and this one is one that isn't as difficult as it may sound, and that is you proceed as if you were going to lay out the road, because you're going to want to classify it at the same time. I would suggest you follow the statute in Title 19, that you provide notice to the adjoining landowners, that you schedule a site hearing on the road, that you hold a hearing back here at the Select Board, a public good and necessity hearing, where members of the public can come in and tell you why they think the town should take over that road or why it shouldn't. You've done that two or three times in the last, you know, several years with the roads in town, and you guys did a great job, and it wasn't that difficult. And then that your town attorney would prepare a public good and order, which we've done several times before, and you could then discuss as a Select Board what classification you're going to give that road. Because if you classify it as Class 3, which has to be traversable by a passenger car at all times of the year, you're taking on a lot of expense to rehabilitate a tough section of road. And that's something you've got to, you're going to have to deal with as the legislative body of the town. I'm suggesting you, you could take it over as a town highway on your public good order and classify it potentially as a Class 4 section. You might have two Class 3s with a Class 4 section, and the Class 4 sections are only maintained as necessary for the inhabitants of the community, and the Supreme Court has held, that there's not a binding obligation to maintain it for passenger cars all year round. You may choose to do that, but what that also may mean is you may not have to put in the latest and best culverts and ditches and/or clearances, you know, blasting ledges and things that a Class 3 road might entail. So those are my thoughts. They're outlined, everything is outlined with the exception of my final recommendations. What I've just given you as recommendations is from the seat of my pants here, from my notes. I don't have it summarized for you. Because I wanted you to digest the memorandum first, and if what I've said makes sense, we can lay out the steps that I've just verbalized for you. And Fletcher and his client, I think he represents Mr. Workford, they may want to weigh in on that process. But if you follow that process, you're going to be protected in so many ways. The only potential owner, or at least we believe the only potential owner, Attorney Proctor myself, would be the trustee of the trust. If they quitclaim, and if the townspeople, if you follow through your public good order, everybody's been given an opportunity to come in and to hear and talk to you about this. this. It seems to me you'd have a very solid legally defensible position for doing what you're going to do.
Thank you, Larry. It's amazing. And Fletcher.
And I'd like to, one observation that is, and it builds off of what Larry was saying about the possibility of whether it might actually still be a town road if it wasn't properly discontinued. That, and this, the history of Hartley Hill Road is really convoluted in this sense, both the laying out and the discontinuance. But the worst possible world, if you ask me, is where the town actually has legal responsibility for the road because the discontinuance was defective and the town isn't aware of it. I mean, that just seems to me the worst. So I agree with Larry that, you know, the best thing to do here is to, well, is to do something that clarifies the situation. What the class of the road is, that's a second question, but bring it clearly under the town control so that if there is potential liability there, the town can manage it. Right now, there's just this indefineness and that, looking at it from the standpoint of the town's potential concerns, that piece just kind of makes me crazy. I just think it's better to know what you got your hands on rather than have it rear up and bite you when you're not expecting it.
Thanks. Fletcher, Chuck, you got something?
I was just wondering, do we have to pay for any right of way through there for us to lay out a new road? If in fact it, either wishy-washy is a town road or not, if it's, we're going to call it a new road and we lay out a new road, all the other roads in town that we've taken over, everybody's been for it. Clearly here, there's people that aren't for it. Are we going to have to pay for a right of way through there? See, when we go through bonds? Road frontage?
Well, no, you do not. In other words, you're going to follow, what I'm recommending is you consider, the board consider following the town highway statute and obtaining a quitclaim deed from the only party that we can identify in land records having a legal interest in the road. If a adjoining landowner wishes to oppose or disagree with the town taking over, they have every right to be present in person or by council and provide the basis of their objections and will take it up at that point. But we can't, we can't deal with speculation. What we've done is our due diligence. Fletcher's done a due diligence review of the records. I've piggybacked his work and the town's due diligence would suggest that it's time to resolve the question.
Larry, when I've been on the board, when we did that, and you're right, one of the things that was always brought up was just a lot of other people that want us to take over a road. So this isn't the only one. And we were adamant that that had to come up to a class three road no matter what, to be fair to all the other people that wanted us to take a road over that was in really poor shape. That was always part of my concern was whenever I asked about that, they were like, "Well, this thing has to have a lot of work done to the, to the road in order to bring it to class three." So you just brought up a good point. If we could figure out, can we actually leave it, part of it as a class four? I never heard such a thing. That's something new that I hadn't thought of or didn't know yet. I said before we jump into it and actually say, "Let's go ahead and take over," we also don't want to take over something, realize, "Wow, we just dug a hole and now we're going to put a lot of money into making it into that road." I'd like, I'd be curious to know what the difference, do we actually have a choice of leaving it a class four but letting it be just basically maintained so people can drive through it?
If we did that, the condition wouldn't change from what it is right now?
Yeah.
We'd be responsible for culverts and bridges.
Yeah, I think.
And light maintenance.
We'd have to do a little bit and bring it up to class four.
Right. But then we would have time to actually someday to bring it to class three if we wanted to.
Down the road.
Down the road.
You have a wall of class four roads and then up to class four.
I didn't hear that.
That's our road form, that's our road form. Think we've got a problem, huh?
So the answer, answer Craig is absolutely. When you take over a road, it doesn't necessarily mean that you've assigned a classification. I wanted, I wanted to provide that to use an option so that there is a greater comfort level in your flexibility. And I think that's the approach that you may want to consider is a class, you take it over as a class four and if at time, over time, if it can be upgraded, class three. The other things that you've done, I think in the past, and if memory serves me correctly here, is sometimes either this town or other towns have asked the adjoining, you know, as a condition to taking it over, they had to contribute. I don't know that I necessarily see this in the same situation. If in fact the owner is the trust and they're willing to quitclaim their interest in it and you folks hold your hearings and you're, and you decide that it's in the public interest of the town, that this become a town route, you know, I think then you can deal with the classification issue. And as Fletcher and I, you know, we're both, we've suggested, but neither of us know, you know, it may be a town highway right now. It may have always been. And Patton and Sir Sossimo may have never had the right to grant, or not grant right of ways, but never had, never owned it in the first place. If they had been taxed on it as a separate parcel, the issue probably would have been resolved.
That was actually, that came up when Ruth brought it up and I suggested that to her, that the, if you sent Jeff Morris a tax bill, you'd get a quitclaim deed by return mail. She pointed out that the town of Westminster doesn't tax land that's used solely for a road. So that didn't work.
A lot of towns do, but I don't know at the lister's process here in Westminster. But yeah, a lot of towns tax subdivision roads separately of the lots.
I guess, speaking of part of the select board, where do we go from here?
Yeah.
That's, that would be my question.
Well, I don't know that you need, well, I'm jumping in, excuse me. I wasn't asked a question. I don't know that you need to make a decision tonight. I mean, I've presented you with a lot of information. You've got material to read. Fletcher's presented you with options to think about as well. So I don't know that you necessarily have to feel compelled because you've got a big agenda.
We can put it back on the agenda, but I just think that at least a voice vote from the select board, if we wanted to say no or at least continue on so that we can at least encourage the two of you to keep going and come back to us, would be a fair way at least tonight. And being I've been here so long and gone through this battle over and over again, I never had an answer. We're this close and you threw out the idea, because I was, I mean, even the prior road form scared me how bad that road could be if we had to go up to class three. This idea you brought tonight is an excellent idea of being a class four. I'm definitely, let's push it through. Let's see what we can do. I'm only one selected, one of the select board.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to move this forward to table to our next meeting to take further consideration in the interim by all select board members to study the memorandum, listen carefully to what both Fletcher Proctor and Larry said today, and renew this for the next, for the next meeting for further consideration.
I think you made a motion, so I'll second.
Motion has been made and seconded to table to the next meeting pending more clarification information. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you very much, both of you.
This is great.
We've done 50 years, but yeah.
B, appointment list, second draft.
What's the difference in the color now between the red? Why is it red?
So the red have all been notified and approved. So we have, all we have left is the ARPA select board member and alternate.
Who approved them? You say approved, the select board had to approve.
I have only got these names and the people said yes to their positions they had previously. So hence they're in red.
I would like to make the road commission change that to Jason Perry.
I'll second that.
While we're on it, I don't, don't see anybody else, but I'm only.
Just like to point out, if we're going to come up to the incompatible offices, the cemetery commissioner and town manager are incompatible offices.
Okay. We have a, we have a motion and a second.
I just asked for the motion to be repeated. I couldn't, I never did.
I guess we can make one motion on each one. I wouldn't know if we were doing it all together, but I'll make a motion that we, to put, take Russ Hodgson's name off the road commissioner and put Jason Perry on, under that title. And I guess it could be a motion, so therefore I'm making a motion.
I'll second that motion.
Somebody's a vote on it. Yeah. So it's been made, motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And I recuse myself.
What were the other two that you brought up?
Oh, the incompatible offices. We have, our manager can't also be the cemetery commissioner.
That's correct.
Where are you, where are you finding that?
In the chart of incompatible lots here.
I was looking at it.
I know the document, I didn't know what the, I don't even know what the community is. What do you do?
We make sure that all of the deeds are recorded and that the lots meet the correct locations.
So it's nothing that you really have to do, somebody else could do it. We just need to come up with somebody that would be willing to do it.
Yeah, that, somebody would have access, it's just to go in and make sure that they would. We can just table that one and not, not accept it.
That one, right.
So we need to fund the cemetery commissioner?
Right. Basically, yeah.
Do we need a motion for that tonight or just?
No, I don't think that will. We haven't, we haven't voted for the whole list yet because we have to, brought that out. Normally when we're all done, we make, we read each one down and we all accept, so we just wouldn't read the cemetery commissioner.
You could also see if Christopher Potter would be interested in just switching and being the commissioner and having Russ be the assistant.
That's what I was wondering, I don't know.
Then it's not a conflict.
Yeah, yeah. So we can do that. Let's leave, let's leave both of those off and I'll just cross them off and we'll, does that make sense for us? We could ask Chris if you could be one and he could be the other?
That's fine.
Yeah. Anything else on this? Anybody see?
Yes, the ARPA committee, we need, we need to fill in some, some gaps. We need a select board representative and an alternate.
I think you had me as a representative.
I did.
I didn't realize it was a meeting yesterday, otherwise I would have gone, but I can continue to do it if you want.
Are we interested in having an alternate?
I'll be the alternate.
And that was it for that? Wyndham Regional?
Westminster Economic, going down the list, we need a select board alternate.
Where did you guys meet?
Where?
When? We've met here. It's once a month typically. It is about an hour meeting. This is the one that was just created.
It's the one you just created?
Yep. Again, you won't be asked to go to every meeting, but some of them possibly should be.
Daytime varies or is it a standard?
It is, I think it is the third.
We've been doing the third Wednesday.
Third Wednesday? I believe it's, I want to have 5:30 or 6:00?
I think it's 6:00. Yeah, that works.
It's an alternate, so that's our deal.
Let's check. A question from my own knowledge, if they're pointing these alternates, that makes them a voting member? Is that the difference? Because each one of your seats can be an ex-official member of any mission board. Is the difference by making them an alternate, giving them anything?
Typically boards and commissions, the alternate is replacing the board member that can't make it. So yes, they're, they are a voting member.
Only in the event that one wasn't there.
Development Review Board, Toby Young was the select board alternate. Assuming she will take it again, she has been there for a while.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure she said she did.
Emergency Management Director.
Is there a reason why you couldn't do that?
No, I, I feel I'm fine with that.
No, 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 I'm fine with him doing it. I got enough to do. I was going to say.
Planning Commission, Jason Perry, select board alternate.
That's fine.
Wyndham Solid Waste Representative, select board alternate.
I'll do that. So just Wyndham Regional Planning Commissions then?
We will, we're advertising them and, and, and fill them in as we can.
All right. Anything else on the appointment list?
I recommend that you pass what you have and it's a work in progress as it always is. And the information as it comes in will be forwarded to you. But the list that you have in front of you, I would like to proceed with the documents that I have to fill out for these other commissions.
I'll entertain a motion for that. I'll go ahead and make a motion that we approve the list that was in front of us with the corrections that we did to it and that you would come back to us with a final copy.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? 7/29/21 storm update.
Just in your packet, just to keep you updated, we now have two projects obligated. We have signed the third one, which means it's a day away from being obligated. We have projects for five, six, and seven that have been completed in our different phases of the chain of events for FEMA. And she's working on the last completed project, which was the east. And she's two thirds done that. So in another week or two, she'll have that one into the process. And the only thing that's left is the Westminster Heights Road culvert replacement. And that is going to be a mitigation, different classification for CATS, I think it's CATS-C project. And once the bid comes in, we can submit that before it's completed, because the bid is the bid. So we, as you can see, we already have about $14,000 worth of expenses in that and she has recorded those. And when the bid comes in, it will be added to that and then it will be processed.
Have we received any monies back yet?
We have not. It has been a month. I think I've kind of set myself, just every month I'm going to pound them to see why it's not been, the obligated money is sitting in.
About one or two were fairly close.
Two are obligated. That means the money is sitting in the state's pocket from FEMA at 75%. Those checks should have been cut. They were promised to us to be cut a month and a half ago or so. And they keep giving me the, I give you the emails. And they keep giving me the, I give you the emails, that I know you're not being a pest, but, you know, it takes three different commissions to all sign off, and they haven't yet. They're working, I think the last time they said they were working very hard to get us, we're the first in the queue. So now we have, um, we'll have three in the queue for the first round of checks. That's great.
Thank you. Any other questions on 7/29/21 storm update? Oh, June?
Um, I just have one for Russ, um, did she get back to you yet as to whether or not the firemen can be reimbursed for their help for the town?
There, we're working on the stipend part, that's, that's a little bit of a hiccup, but the equipment and the apparatus is definitely. So she's taking her whole packet, um, trust me that she, she will be calling and asking questions, and I'll be forwarding them to you.
Okay, great.
Yeah, but she's pretty confident that, that in some facet that we can, we can manage the stipends.
Uh, moving on, new business, town meeting discussion.
It's time to start, um, looking at our articles and putting people to them. It is also time to start thinking about what you folks are going to, um, be talking about under other proper business, such as possibly the Northwest Community House, um, Town Garage. These are things that have been in your capital plan, and they're getting to the point of being stagnant again, we want to keep them moving. And you had mentioned multiple times that the taxpayers need to weigh in on it. So, um, that conversation needs to get started, and, and, uh, we do have only two more meetings before town meeting now, so.
Those were all planned, those items were things where I was talking before about, we talk about them, but they don't ever really seem to go anywhere, so.
Right.
We should see what people want to do.
If, if, if you're you have enough information for these items, town meeting is, is your time to, to find out what the taxpayers are, are really thinking, and that way you can move forward with direction.
Craig, do you have information on the?
Yeah, I just.
That you can put together?
I got a long meeting, we could put it back on the schedule for next time, but yeah.
Oh, you would be, this is gonna be a work in progress again?
Yeah, I mean, what really put us behind was the COVID monkey, you know, you did, so, but yes, I would think that Northwest Minister has to discuss at town meeting. And I do have, I'll have numbers by then to give us an idea of what we, the question would be is, what are we gonna do with it? And we're still working on that, but yeah. I think that we should at least address, if things are coming down the forecast, and whether it's the garage or Northwest Minister, so people know that we're starting to look at it, what we're gonna do, so, yeah.
So what do we need to do with this tonight?
Do you want to put names to, to Article 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, and 9?
We have to do it tonight? Well, we've only got two meetings.
You've only got two meetings, and you're going to need information, so if you don't have an article to your name, then I can't help you get the information you need and want.
Yeah?
She gets them all.
Yeah.
Right?
You said four through 10?
Four through nine.
Four through nine.
I have a quick question about five, which might help whoever designed that. If we're being reimbursed by the, by FEMA, why do we need $350,000? Is it them?
I'll take Article 5.
We're all sitting here quiet waiting.
I'm happy to just take the shots.
Paul, do you have some?
I do. My question is, is there a reason or reasons that our town meeting location can't be changed back to the high school now in light of much less COVID restrictions? There's a pretty good segment of the community that would be much better served by that building and its facilities than the law and the institute.
It has been warned and, um, since we picked that date, the law and the institute, so.
I understand that, but the question is, can it be changed?
Larry, can you weigh in on that?
Yeah, I honestly don't know, because there's so much flexibility accorded in how you hold meetings this year. I mean, you, you've met all the statutory requirements, the warnings gone out, the articles, people have been given fair notice of the articles. Again, I'm shooting from the pants here a little bit, but I think you were scheduled for April 30th. April, um, if you acted soon, you know, reach out to the Secretary of State, may well be able to shift the location.
But before we shift it, we have to know that the high school is available.
It is.
I know that for that.
We'll leave Nate Stoddard one to ask a question. Uh, go ahead Nate.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Craig, if I may, a quick clarification, you made a comment that you plan, under Article 10, transact any other business brought before the town of Westminster, you're gonna talk about the Northwest Minister Community House and the Town Garage. How are people supposed to know that that conversation is gonna happen?
It's just a discussion, we're not making any decisions, so what's under discussion, so you bring, I think you have a right to bring up anything.
No, I agree, I agree, but you're, you're not reaching out to let everybody know that that discussion's gonna happen, you're just relying on it.
Yeah.
Nobody, nobody knows that under other transactions, other business, you're gonna talk about something substantial. I get it if somebody wants to bring up that they want to change the lease law for dogs or something, but you're talking, you're gonna have a conversation about pretty substantial items to a limited, uh, potentially limited group of folks who might be even more limited, because they don't look at, they don't see anything on the warning that indicates there's gonna be these discussions.
I thought we just put on the discussions, things that have to be moved, not, we're not gonna make any motions at all. I, I guess, we've always done in the past, is basically at the end get up and say, hey, listen, we're looking at doing this or that. It's not like you're going to the town and say, hey, this is what we want to do, and we need your permission to proceed. We're not asking, we're not even close to that stage of having a dollar of value put on, it's more the generality of where we're gonna head.
I think it's just, this is what's on our radar, kind of thing.
Alright, thanks for the clarification.
Can I, can I bring my question back one more time? Can I point my question to the board to pursue changing the location of this year's town meeting back to the high school? And whatever it would take to do that.
We would have to make that decision before our next meeting, right Russ?
Yes, you, you need to do it now, tonight.
But then we would have to get a hold of the Secretary of State, proceed illegally.
Right, but if you don't have, if I don't have a direction to go, then I'm, or you're waiting till this meeting.
I'd like to make a motion, um, to investigate the moving of town meeting from the venue of the institute to fellow slumming in high school on, uh, April 30th, 2022, uh, with the following prerequisite, that the town manager be empowered to contact the Secretary of State to make sure that we are in, at least within compliance, I hope counsel, that's good enough. And that we could in fact, uh, make that decision, and also find out whether or not the school is available, and what facilities will be available, uh, to make sure that, or max, that the, uh, we maximum dominate everyone who seeks to attend. How's that?
I just had a hard part, the first part, you said to investigate, why don't we just make the motion that we go ahead and approve the meeting at the high school if the town manager can get it approved by the state and the school.
If you're paralegal right here Larry. There you go, right there. You guys, I just don't want to come back to another meeting just to vote on something that we already agreed to. Good enough.
Well done. When we advertise it, we should make sure that people know it's important, and we should come.
Pretty much everything that's talked about, I hear at this meeting is pretty important.
Yeah.
I think we're under that vote.
I second that motion by the way. Uh, moved and seconded, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Most passes. Who else are takers on this list here?
I would recommend.
What's your suggestion?
That Article 6 would be, uh, um, Toby?
Sure.
Craig, can you take the budget?
I guess. Which one do you pick?
Number three.
I think Kevin skipped by that one, that's why he outsmarted.
I believe I've had it for two in a row.
I'll do four.
Kevin skipped that one. Katrina, can you take?
Oh, Jason, I'll do four.
Do four, just assign me something.
About seven.
Bingo.
Five, seven, eight, nine, 10.
Easy.
One and two.
Number eight's the one that's always gonna be the competition.
Nine.
So who's gonna take eight?
I'll take eight.
Oh, good. I'm the one that's always getting the one.
That's true, we always get it.
And number nine.
That's Toby's name.
There you go.
Could you get a seven? Someone for seven?
Yeah, I think Katrina.
Katrina, thank you.
So it's Craig, Jason, Kevin, Toby, Katrina, Kevin, Toby. Perfect, thank you, that's a great start.
Thank you.
When you start looking at your articles, you wanna get more information than what I'm gonna give you this next meeting, that's when you tell me, I, I'd like to know, I'd like to dig into more of the weeds and, um, go from there. Thank you.
Anything else on, uh, town meeting discussion?
If I may.
Yep.
Again, Willa Stern's a gap. When it comes to the article for the $350,000 question, as up to the moment as we can be with what we know about funds coming from FEMA, whoever's doing that article, you should have a financial position known, so that when you're going in there, that number is going to change. And we want to be as accurate as we can up to that meeting.
Did you understand that? It's changing daily, our, our obligated money, and hopefully it starts to change that we're getting money.
That's the part I want, is getting money.
Then it becomes, and it, it doesn't go away, but it could get very much shorter, very much smaller than the end.
Yeah, we had named the number before the election, and Katrina came up with it, we had named the number there, 271,000, so we know it's gonna change.
Well, we have a changed number for, on, uh, April 29th, that would be at least reliable for April 30th? Okay.
We, we know what we know and what we don't know, we're not gonna guess that.
Okay.
Alright. Delinquent taxes discussion.
In your packets, you have, um, the list of delinquent taxes, and, um, questions come out for why is there three years, um, on some of these, and, um, I have answers for each and every one of them, of course. Some we couldn't find at tax sale time, some, um, had a broken contract, um, they were working on it, promising, and didn't pull through.
You say contract, are you talking like a, like a written document, it's not just a, I'll come in and pay, you know?
Yeah, no, it's a written contract that, that is, um, you know, binding, and, um, they broke that. We've had, um, some that it was so small with the second year that we did felt that it wasn't worth bringing tax sale, and contacted them multiple times and still have not received any notifications or anything. We have a couple of the two, two furs that are, are, um, as religious as it can be with payments, um, they're, they're great. They come in with what they can afford, and, uh, and so they have two years, but they're working on it. We have a couple properties that are in the process of being sold to pay the taxes. We have a, uh, one in particular that I just signed some documents today with the, uh, Larry Slayson's office to, um, get paid for some of the work we did on the land, so that the property can be processed and, and sold accordingly, but we still have a lien of, of services on it. And that's pretty much what it is, it is, uh, it's the same, same few people, and if you look through the names, it's, it really is the same, folks that, that love to play the, I can wait a year to pay my taxes, and, but it's, it's, uh, we're, we're getting them still, right regular, so, this will start to shrink shortly. We've sent out one letter, I'm gonna send out another next week. We don't press any longer to go before June 30th, we'll give it to, um, Larry to, to, um, to tax sale, saw probably in the June 1st range. And so they, they're getting the letters that stating that, that time is running out, and you need to, uh, set up a payment schedule or else, so. Just a heads up, what's, the work that we're being, that's being done on that.
And even these numbers have probably changed, it's just printed 317, so.
Mine is up to date, but yours isn't, I just, it's picking a date, it's actually print them off, and, so yes, they, that does change data.
New financial position discussion.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you Chair, I have three questions. Number one, the delinquent tax report used to be printed in the counter port, and that stopped, which I'm not sure why, but I think that by doing that, it might shame a few of these people into paying or making a deal to pay. Number two, um, as a town employee or a board member of any board in the town of Westminster, isn't, can't we, um, garnish their wages, their stipend to pay their taxes? We cannot do that. Okay? And the third thing.
One, two.
I know, you heard this.
I'm gonna call throughout by name.
And the third thing is, um, I was new to the tax sale, um, last year, um, or the last time we did it, but there's a name on this list that I see several times, um, and, um, they bought several properties at the last tax sale. So I'm wondering if this is a normal thing, and if we, if it is, if we have to continue to sell them properties? Granted, it's not large amounts, but you know.
So let's, let's answer the first one. Many moons ago, well before my tenure here, the town of Westminster at a town week meeting, determined that it was, um, humiliating to have your name posted for delinquent taxes, where some people just need the extra time to pay. There's a date that would have to be, um, determined, all your reports have to go into this town report, so that means by January 1st, if you haven't completely paid your taxes, you are in there. You might have an asterisk beside your name, because no one has paid, um, the second, um, payment by then. So, again, the board, the select board at town meeting asked what the public wanted, and that's what was said, is no.
We were getting a lot of people that legitimately paid it a little late, and they were on the list. They were getting very upset, because it looked like they didn't pay their taxes, when they did, they paid their taxes, paid their penalty, but it's too late to correct it. They were the ones, the people that never paid their taxes, never looked at the report, wouldn't care. So you didn't shame the people in that you really wanted to shame, you only shamed the people who were actually good people, who just made a mistake and actually got caught out.
$600,000 is a large sum.
However, every year we seem to also get, that's one of the reasons why we end up on such a surface, we seem to get quite a few people to get caught back up again.
I just have to ask, how, how'd you get the report?
It was in the, um, it was in the email.
Select board packet had it.
My fault. What's that?
Select board packet had it.
Select board packets have it, but yeah.
Did you read them?
Because that is, again, I don't publicize that and that's why folks don't have them in the audience. Um, is because, I, again, by order, the select board did not want them published.
It is public information, all right?
Yes, it is. It is public information, but we as a town have said that it can be publicized.
So it can be publicized at town meeting, but that still can be requested as a public, right?
Absolutely. Most people ask for a paid property. They don't ask for the whole list, but yeah. Uh, what was two? He answered three.
Somebody owes taxes, back taxes.
Oh, can we stop?
Tax sale.
Larry?
The answer is absolutely yes, because they're helping you collect your taxes. Anybody who buys at a tax sale um, has to pay the, and delinquent taxes of another taxpayer. And that's how you satisfy those folks. Um, and then they take the risk of, you know, well, of risk. They're, the state creates an incentive, they receive 1% per month on the purchase price, uh, until the taxpayer redeems. Uh, but, uh, the state of Vermont has felt the best way to create incentives is, uh, you know, and satisfy municipal tax bills is to, is to give a potential third parties an opportunity to buy properties at tax sale. So there's no, there's no process to prohibit who could bid. It's an open process to the general public.
So the answer is no?
The answer is no. I guess I could've said that.
No, you know why.
No, thanks for the explanation. I have the information anyway, so I'm gonna ask questions about it, even if I wasn't supposed to have it. Um, there's some people who owe like huge amounts of taxes on, you know. Um, that I, I guess I just had some questions about the standing on that, um, the Kissel Farm.
I would ask that you don't use names, please.
Okay, so.
Parcel numbers.
Um, the parcel 015067-000.
They have been working with the town, um, vigorously because of the, um, death of the mother who had multiple internal contracts with folks that are living actually at the sites, but didn't own the property. So when mom died, all of the tax bills went back to the family and they're scrambling. So in this next year, I have told them, I have given them a year. Um, I told them in this year, they will go to tax sale if I haven't seen any movement. And they've promised that they've got two buyers ready to pay off these taxes within the next few months.
But you have a right to go and see them or anything.
Absolutely.
Um, all right. This is parcel 003005-000, it's the first one on the list. Um, there's a lot of public information about that situation. I guess I'm a little complicated, I'm a little confused because a friend of mine got lost on that road and drove up to that house and the pickup truck in the driveway reads the license plate O T T O. So whoever owns the property also owns the LLC, also owns the pickup truck that's sitting in the driveway.
Larry, this is one that was removed off of our tax sale, um, for they, for the fact that they could not find, proper notice. Um, it's a little disheartening that they're living there and if they are one of the two, uh, parties, um, that owe this substantial amount of taxes.
Yeah, I don't know.
I know.
So I can't really comment on it, Russ. It's, it, the taxpayer is obvi, it's an LLC. You'd have to, uh, and you can track the LLC, who are the members of the LLC, they're the ones who get served with the process, so, um, you know, that I can't speak to it.
So.
I don't know that we've been given any assignment to find them, have we?
Yes, you have. You took, you took them off my tax sale.
Well, you say we took it off.
Because you couldn't find the owners, is what I was told. That's why that number is so substantial. They were on my list to.
Well, Ray Masuko developed the LLC.
Oh, good. Well, yeah, so we'll find out.
And I have the, I have first and last name on the owner of the LLC, however he's been.
Can I jump in here?
Yeah.
Yeah.
In the interest of time.
Yeah.
If, if you have specific questions, can we, can you take it up?
Yep.
Was up, because I'm sure there's several that you might have questions.
That was really my two big ones.
Okay. Um, can we move on?
Yeah.
From tax. Uh, new financial position discussion. I'm assuming that's what Chip is here for, some of that.
In your packet, you have, um, some job descriptions that we found on the LCT's website and printed off for, to show what, what is possible, but what also the, the multiple discrepancies are from town to town. What some towns want is not exactly what the second town wants. So out of this, yes, um, why it's pretty much on there and Chip is here for that is to stay here is, is are you going to, are you going to create a committee? Are you going to, um, create your own job description? Are you going to have, um, Ernie and Chip help us put together a job description? Knowing what town Westminster needs for that position? How, how are we gonna move forward? We're not, we're not moving forward because we don't have a direction.
Good question. I think we need to, uh, I, I do happen to know the town of Sharon, I've just been dealing with that lady who's, who's actually retired.
Retired, yeah.
And she convinced her job, and I don't know if you guys worked with her, Deb, she's, she's excellent, excellent person. She actually helped push through that they actually made the town treasurer a non-elected position to the town. So I kind of wondered about, like, if she did that, it was all because of who you have that's qualified to do the job. And she was qualified to do the job, but they were getting nervous that she, when she retired, they couldn't find somebody and somebody would run for election, so. Um, I think we need to really get together as a board of how, yeah, exactly how we're gonna, what, what, what is this position really gonna be? Who the answer to? How's it affect our relationship with NIMR and all that? But yeah, and basically where we're going with the town treasurer position. Because if really we're doing this to eliminate that, that could go back to another discussion.
Well, you're not eliminating it, you're, you're shrinking that demand of that position and you're taking, um, a lot of burden that we have with NIMR and you're, you're creating that position to, to do the heavy lifting of our accounting.
Can I jump in? Mr. Chairman, just, be careful not to confuse the, the two issues. A number of towns now have voted to have their select board, the legislative body, appoint treasurers and town clerks. A number of towns are moving to that, uh, and removing them as elected positions. Um, but regardless of, even if the town authorizes the select board to make the appointment, the duties of the respective offices remain the same as defined by statute. So you can't redefine the duties. A town clerk has certain statutory duties. A town treasurer has certain statutory duties, but they don't necessarily have to be elected positions. I don't know if that was helpful.
Yes, it was.
I guess that was a clarification. We were always in the past kind of knowledge that we, we always had to have a town treasurer be elected and that.
Well, you did. The law changed just a short time ago.
That's what I'm saying. Now things have changed, so when we originally thought of this was because we couldn't get around and, and I'm still for this position. I'm just saying we do have choices where we didn't have, this is a short period of time ago.
Right, and now if you're going to appoint your, um, those, those positions, you'd have to, uh, include a warning at your next annual meeting and a year from now, shall the position of treasurer be appointed by the select board? And there's statutory language that, that is actually, appears expressly that you, that you're authorized to insert in your, in your warning.
But we still will have to ask permission of voters.
Correct.
We're gonna remove an elected position.
Correct. The voters have to, have to authorize that.
Right.
Shall the position of town treasurer be an appointed position?
And the charter has to be redone for the town.
Well, not ordinarily, no.
Through the legislative body.
Um, that's news to me. No, none of the towns have been revising their charters.
We try, we tried to redo this with a lister and treasurer position.
How, how recently?
It was when I got here, it was eight, eight years ago.
Okay, yeah, the legislature just modified the statute.
Just modified.
Well, I say just, within the last couple of years.
Last couple of years, because I just ran into a couple of towns that.
Because it was always an elected position by statute, now it can be appointed.
That's why I said this was a, by the town of Sharon, there was a funny person who's now gonna retire and they're gonna actually make an appointment. I said, how'd you do it? Just because it just happened, but they were prepared, they went to the town, the voters had to pass it at the town meeting and they, they're moving forward to this transition.
Yeah, several towns in, in Southern Vermont have done that already.
Why we have your, your fine head here tonight? Um, I just, and thank you for clarifying that. So let's assume that we went to the town people and they agreed that we could make the appointment for treasurer and assistant treasurer.
Well, assistant treasurer.
Assistant treasurer and.
Clerk.
Clerk.
Those are the two that are elected positions.
I wanna be clear what you said. Let's assume we got that. So if we created this financial manager position, it still cannot impede or in any way take away the actual statutory roles of the clerk and the treasurer, even though they're appointed?
That is correct.
Okay. So we'll have to craft this very delicately around, irrespective of what we, what we come up with, an elected position or an appointed position, we have to craft this around the fact that we can't impede or interlope on their responsibility.
That's why I made the comment I did. I didn't want there to be a misunderstanding that if you do appoint someone, that you can totally tailor their job duties. That's not the case. The job description of a town clerk, there's certain things that only a town clerk can do, there's certain things only a town treasurer can do, uh, in terms of certain warrants and, 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 and bills in the, in the town. Many towns have added a finance director or a finance position, bringing in somebody with additional accounting, financial background to help with budgeting, financial planning, um, and a whole range of, of financial duties. Uh, town of Putney to Southview did that for years where they had a finance director, a town treasurer, and a town clerk.
So with that, I'd like to make, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make, uh, move things along. I'd like to make a motion that we establish a subcommittee to, uh, take everything that Larry has just said and, uh, board members and, uh, move ahead to, um, start crafting this position in accordance with, um, everything that Larry's just said.
One second. Uh, motion's been moved and seconded. Dr. Repeat, what you said?
Sorry.
No, no, you're good. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, opposed? If it passes?
I'm happy to be on that board, Mr. Chair.
Is this for clerk and treasurer or just treasurer?
It's the finance.
This is a finance.
New financial position.
Financial director, I think is the name that Putney used.
In addition to a treasurer?
Correct. We're, we're just looking into it.
I don't know if you look at the treasurer responsibilities, but it's a law to think that you just hire somebody off the street and they'd be.
Well, you wouldn't hire, you'd be relaxed.
Find somebody.
It could be anybody, you know what I mean?
To assume you'd just find someone on your system, I would know what to do.
It's a lot, it's a lot of stuff.
Um, so it's under my understanding too that the treasurer, when assist, when appointing an assistant treasurer can, can delegate responsibilities. They can't be taken away from you, but if you hire an assistant treasurer, you can delegate responsibilities to them. Is that correct?
Oh, well, yeah, that's true in part.
In part, yeah.
A treasurer has the statutory authority to hire an assistant treasurer to assist in treasurer duties. The, the treasurer cannot, uh, abdicate duties to the assistant. The treasurer is still the treasurer.
Yeah.
So the assistant does that, assists the treasurer, but you can't transfer duties?
Yeah.
If, if, follow what I'm saying?
Yeah.
So to that extent, we're on the same page, yes, I agree. You can do that.
Uh, do we want to establish this committee right now?
Please.
You, you said you'd be on?
I'd be very happy to.
Uh, who else would we?
Well, if you have three, then you gotta warn them either, so they have to think about that.
I did, I don't.
Yeah, so.
Board, board members.
Two.
Yes, two is one.
Great, and then have a couple from the community. I know June Strider has fallen.
June.
I would really like to be on this committee since I've had to deal with the treasurer for years. I'm not even that bad.
Terrific.
She has vested interests.
I have vested interests.
Terrific.
Uh, how many, how many people were you thinking?
Anyone else present, wish to be on that?
I don't think so.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I think Chip should, I think Chip should.
We have a hand right here.
Right, I'm going with him.
Yep.
You had him and then you had Chip.
And Chip, well, you wanna do that?
He's skeptical.
I still have raising.
So there's the same dilemma you had before.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm a paid contractor.
Yeah, okay, so.
One of my.
Negatory.
I certainly can participate.
Yeah.
Again, do you want a written contract?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Do you want a word of mouth?
That's what I was gonna say.
I think we got the four we need, but thank you very much.
I would presume that anything that transpires and comes out of the committee is something that Ross will want by the end of.
Right.
When I'm here.
Okay, good enough.
I don't think Chip would, would say it because he's modest, but obviously, he was the finance director in Rockingham for many years and did a wonderful job for that community. So you have an individual here who's held the seat that you folks are thinking of creating and in Rockingham was delegated a number of duties that were still compatible to those of town treasurer. So you do have a tremendous resource sitting right here in the room.
Beautiful. Okay, Mr. Chair, we have four.
So I will add to the, to the confusion that may exist. There is a huge difference between what's written in statute that you have to abide by and what the LCT puts into a treasurer's mandate.
Yes, agree.
So.
Agree. The LCT has expanded the role substantially beyond state statute.
Okay. I want that to be understood and the committee should look at the statute because, as an example, the town manager in Middlebury was the assistant treasurer and the statute reads, in the absence of the treasurer to fulfill their duties, the assistant treasurer shall assume that. And that is going on right now. I am the contracted finance director for Middlebury, working remotely. So it is feasible that you have a treasurer that can meet all those obligations. Dorian Aldridge certainly did. She signed all the documents as treasurer. And finding the money moved, opened account, closed an account, sit down, explained it to her, which apparently nobody else ever did, and she would sign the document, um, knowing she signed for a purpose. She got a stipend, but she never performed a task other than merely signing checks and signing documents. She had all that responsibility by statute. But that was vested in someone who worked under the town manager, former government, worked for the town manager. And I think that's what Westminster needs to do, is have an employee that works for the town manager, doing if you will, the grunt work that has to take place. And that the treasurer position, who must also be a voter in your town, can be anyone. I think you still need the standard of the statutes. And again, the reason I emphasize that is there's a lot of quoting from the LCT who also happens to be your insurance carrier, who also happens to be, like Larry, conservative, because they do, they want to be as, as part of your representation. Um, but the reality is, it has become so complex in third-party reporting obligations that the average person on the street does not know everything there is to go with just the act of having employees. that the average person on the street does not know everything there is to go with just the act of having employees. So as a committee, that's where I would steer you. Read the statute, make sure you're filling that obligation. And then that someone in this position is answerable to the town manager and is performing the tasks at the direction of the town manager.
In defense of the LCT, their manual is intended to apply to all towns, and many towns don't have a finance director position. And if they don't, then it, the town treasurer takes on the broader, broader financial role uh, in, in, in the governance of the town. Yes, and, and so that's one of the reasons. So I think, I, I think you're hearing the same message maybe uh, relate a couple of different ways, but your committee, uh, should take a look at what is statutorily required to be performed by a town treasurer. It may be more limited than you find statutorily. Um, and then what you may wish that town treasurer to do, or would you prefer to delegate those duties to a finance administrator or a finance director? But that's a fairly detailed, intense, um, uh, discussion. It's gonna involve, um, some, a lot of work on a committee. It's not an easy process to work through.
Thank you both.
Thank you. Uh, anything else on financial position? Uh, moving on, conflict of interest discussion and policy.
Um, Mr. Chair, unless anyone else would object, given the time that we have taken already with our discussion, um, I would like to table this, uh, I'm gonna make a motion to table it, I would make a point though, given what we were just talking about. This is the whole evolution. So with everything we just talked about, about the financial officer, um, in the packet it was given, is an actual, the last time that this town board signed a conflict of interest policy, um, which came out of the town record. It is extensive, it is specific, and it is very, very important. Uh, at least as far as I'm concerned, as a taxpayer, that we not only revisit these policies, but reestablish them, if, if, if so, if we so choose. And I would just encourage, uh, my fellow board members to look at it. Uh, so we're having for the next meeting, maybe up higher on the agenda. Uh, but I would ask at this point that, uh, for the sake of time and the rest of the business and everyone here, uh, that we table it until our next meeting.
Agreed. I, I guess I'll second it. I'm only thinking definitely, if I'm a part of the conflict of interest, I thought it was only gonna do it for a couple of weeks anyways. I guess that means I'm still gonna be staying here doing this, which I was happy to get the heck out of what I was ever asked to do, but I guess two, uh, three more weeks, I guess ain't gonna kill it.
Well, if, unless we want to address that right now. I mean, like I said, I, I'm simply making it for the sake of time, but-
I think we did do it with like the idea that this was only a short period of time to fill it in, and, uh, this is definitely not a, a long-term solution to what we need to be doing, so, yeah. I guess because we're all signed in, but I haven't done anything yet anyway, so.
I think it's agreed that we're not, we want it, so.
So, well, I don't, I mean, it's, it's an easy enough fix.
That's true.
I mean, Russ can be the assistant treasurer, honestly. It's not, it's, it's not on the conflict of interest.
That's true, he can.
Which originally we were-
And he already holds a token, so.
Uh, he doesn't have it. Your town clerk could be assistant treasurer too, because she's here in the office, building every day.
I think she said she didn't want to, didn't she?
She now is, as long as it is a, just a small rubber stamp position, she would be interested in what-
So I would make, if that's the case, then I would make the motion to, uh, appoint, um, uh, Pauline O'Brien, our town clerk, uh, to that position in the interim of, uh, assistant treasurer.
I don't know, let's back up. I thought we agreed that we only choose the treasurer, the treasurer chooses the assistant.
You're absolutely right.
That's the way it's always been.
Technically, I had ten days to choose.
That's correct. That's correct.
As of the last meeting, I would consider that my ten days. I, I stand by, I'm happy with Pauline being the choice, I'm happy with Kelly being the choice.
So why don't- So- So why don't you just say, uh,
I would like Pauline to be the assistant treasurer.
I don't think you need a motion of the, you need a motion of the-
Perfect.
No.
I'm appointing her.
We, we already had a motion on the floor.
Thank you.
Okay.
We have a motion on the floor, so you don't have to withdraw the other motion.
Table this to the next meeting. Do you want to withdraw that motion, Ken?
Well, I think, I don't think we need a motion. What we're saying is that she already has the power.
We don't need a motion, I just need to-
I know, I know we don't need one, but we already have it.
No, but she's already got the right to fire me and hire Pauline.
I know, I know, but you're-
Are you trying to withdraw my motion at this time?
Please.
Okay, I'll second it. Well, 'cause I second it, so I withdraw my second.
So now we're back to your interim treasurer. What is your choice?
Is going to appoint an assistant treasurer.
I would like to appoint Pauline O'Brien as the assistant treasurer.
You need a motion for that?
No.
No, she does not.
Back on saying, she can do it anytime she wants.
Okay. Do you have, you give her that?
Sorry to fire Greg.
Yeah.
So our feelings.
Yes, and for clarity, because the board had made the previous appointments, Greg has a token, Greg has been set up as a signer. And that was through the authority of the select board at the time the treasurer was being appointed simultaneously. So, uh, to be clear, it is the intention of the current treasurer to remove Craig from the signer of the account and having a token to the bank. Does that have a true statement?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
You, you, I, I agree with you. The only reason why she can do it, but the select board has to do the approval for the bank, and when I went over to the bank, they wanted to see, the bank, Mascol was the one that wanted to see that select board approved myself of doing it.
Yeah, I can't just, I can't just send someone over there, be like, "Don't worry, you can have us."
Yeah, exactly.
So I'd recommend, uh, if, if your interim treasurer is, is willing, and maybe craft it tonight, but um, just said, uh, "I hereby as treasurer of the town of Westminster, appoint Pauline O'Brien as assistant treasurer pursuant to the authority granted me by twenty-four BSA section one-five-seven-three."
Is the select board making it or is she making it?
Yes.
Okay.
Now, now while you're on-
And that would be the letter, and, and we've now got it on the record, and that way, if you prepare such a letter to mine and sign it, you'll be all set.
Now, let me follow through on it, because I think what he's gonna say, now the select board has to make a motion to take the token from me to give it to them?
Now, we can have that token deactivated.
No, but now we do have the confusion that we already have Kelly on books as the assistant treasurer.
So that appointment should stay, be reinstated by whom?
I would like to reinstate that appointment.
So the same, same verbiage, but two people being appointed with that verbiage. Because Kelly is right now the assistant treasurer.
Oh, she is the assistant.
She is an assistant treasurer, that was by appointment of the select board.
So that she can receive taxes and taxes. Okay, well, we know, yeah, we know there wasn't authority to do that, so whatever it takes to correct that authority, again, should come through your interim treasurer.
Paul did this. Hmm? Paul hired Kelly, uh, to change the names so that-
And he was trying to-
To make our-
Then he was treasurer.
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, so at the time it was, it was absolutely appropriate. Okay.
So we still need the motions?
No, 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 we're just, we're having discussion about the authority of a treasurer to appoint assistant treasurers, and that's why your board doesn't have to make any motions.
Okay. At this point then, uh, Mr. Chair, we'll move with your permission uh, to table both D and C, the conflict of interest and discussion policy, and it's, um, tagging along charter the compatible offices until our next meeting.
D and E.
D and E, that's it.
So he just, you just moved that, Kevin?
We're gonna get the meeting closed, we're stressed out.
Thanks, ready for bed?
Um, I'm just happy.
So I move for both, D and C, D and E.
Moving seconded, all is okay.
Aye.
I'm sorry, who seconded that?
I did.
Correct.
All is opposed.
There you go, we're gonna come up with that.
D and E are tabled till the next meeting.
Do we make the manager's report real quick?
Real quick. Town, uh, hall entrance, uh, should be completed next week. All we have left is the lighting and the main doors are being, they're, they're missing, they're being redone. Um, the ARPA seminar, um, is April fifth at twelve-thirty PM for select board members to go over the final rule and reporting of used funds. I have already signed up myself. Um, if you're available, please just let me know. The next ARPA meeting is, uh, April nineteenth at six PM at the Institute. And as we stated before, bids are due on April first, twenty-twenty-two, for the culvert replacement on the Heights Road, um, at the intersection of School Street. Um, just FYI, we had eleven contractors came to the site visit. So, um, very positive, uh, input from them.
That's it?
That's it.
Thank you.
Boards, committees, and commissions, nothing to report different? I'm sorry?
I do.
Paul?
Paul Bannick, Chair of the ARPA Committee. We're in, as a result of our last meeting, which was poorly attended, but we did have quite a discussion about how the monies from, or received monies from the ARPA, in the ARPA funds should be ear-tagged or not, another way to put it, in the general fund or don't put it in the general fund. I went into the meeting with a very strong sense that we should not put it in the general fund, because I was thinking of all of you, mostly, about having to explain that at a town meeting, how many contentious previous town meetings we've had about monies going into general funds, not being identified, not knowing where residual amounts ended up. Seemed easier, but with some discussion, and there's two rules out, we're two guidance now. Forty-three-page original, a hundred-and-fifty-page new one out. And we are all kind of stumbling down the road. None of us have fully read any of it yet. We don't have a, a good understanding of it ourselves, but the result of the conversation was that maybe it made sense, and it still should just be a consideration for you, because ultimately it's gonna be your decision, to put it in the general fund, because it allows us to spend it in more places, as we understand it right now, with less strings attached, I guess, is the best way I can put that without offending anybody. If we go into the hundred-and-fifty-page rule, it opens up a lot of areas where we might have to consider things, beliefs. I don't want to go much further with that until I have a much clearer understanding. So we've made an initial decision to advise you to put the money into the general fund. We might come back and tell you differently down the road, but that's just our suggestion at this point. All right, and I suddenly feel my layman's, uh, experience because this is an area that I'm not, um, pretty well educated in.
I'd like just to add that, um, the state was very clear in giving towns of our size, um, they actually put the threshold, if you were receiving under ten million dollars, that we're giving you this option, to open up a window of opportunity for spending that not necessarily, um, you would have if you did keep it separate and, and by itself, as Paul just said. The, 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 the true kicker to it all was that, um, we are trying to, to open it up to, to the public, and we don't have, um, we only have a window of, of, of need that, that can be met only about this big. Putting it into the general fund opens it up for multiple, um, uh, uses such as businesses, to, to persons, to projects that the town needs for public good. So as Paul said, it, it, it widens our horizons. And, uh, public forums are, are going to be done. We are talking about a survey at town meeting to service at least three of the boards, um, the ARPA committee being one of them, so.
I don't have a problem with it being in the general fund, but I think there still should be oversight.
We, we cannot report this
Right.
to the state in a very clear and precise manner.
I just want to be clear about my fault.
Right, right, it, it is going to be reported to depth, um, and very, very clear, um, how this money is done.
I guess this is a question for Nimmer. So if they were to do that, would you have to create a separate code and then everything that gets charged to that code?
So there is on the charter of accounts right now, an ARPA fund that's been established.
Should be.
Money that has been tracked into it for revenue. We've already paid two or three bills out of that fund, however, the concept of just give it to the general fund. That ten million dollar threshold, that is part of a new set of rules, is that you can claim it as lost revenue in general government activities other than debt payments, up to the full amount not to exceed ten million dollars. And when you do that, you report once that you're claiming it as lost revenue. There is no reportability or justification of the lost required. And therefore, you bring it into the general fund as our problem, revenue, which creates a surplus in the general fund. And then the go-to the voters with that surplus, as Larry explained an hour and a half ago, that they then can choose to authorize the board to spend the money on certain projects. The cautionary tale is, as long as we don't report what we've already done, you can in the whole sum, take those funds and do that, do that task. It is a lot less paperwork, it means the federal government basically is going to eliminate in the state of Vermont, except Burlington City, uh, City of Burlington, any requirement to justify the lost revenue. I know my hometown of Springfield had already committed and reported the commitment to do water and sewer projects with it. They're on the long road of financial reporting in October every year. They've committed the money already when they were told not to make a commitment till after the due date of the first reporting. Give themselves time. They took the step and then got two-point-four million dollars committed now, that they can't sweep into the general fund for the taxpayer benefit to do anything they want, that the voters want to do it. They stuck with the original rules of water sewer projects. So that's how that works to get to the general fund.
So there's, so there's no accountability on the state level, but as a community, we could commu, uh, uh, create, um, a, a revenue line that shows it, and we could establish where we spent it. We could have expenditures, line items.
By the, by, not until it lands in your fund balance. It's lost revenue. So lost revenue comes in in the year twenty-two.
Right.
And after twenty-two closes, it's now surplus fund balance.
So it would be pretty hard for anybody to follow. You'd have to walk somebody through it, uh, Joe Public.
Oh my God, that one, you're the finance director? Yes. That's exactly why, because accounting-wise, that's how you do it.
Right, no, I get it.
You bring it in, and it generates this huge surplus. Now, because it's fund balance, and you've justified it as lost revenue, you report to nobody except your voters, which you're gonna do with the fund balance.
You're not gonna track it till the following year.
Uh, you-
Or whenever it's-
You can designate all, some, or none of the fund balance as voter. Yeah. Yeah.
Um, so the ARPA money has to be spent by twenty-twenty-
Six.
Six. So if we put it in the general budget, town, if I'm reading this correctly, the BTLC doesn't allow your, um, general town fund to overlap.
Carry over.
To carry over, but your highway fund can. So how would that ARPA money that is left in there carry over to the next year?
It's, again, it comes to fund balance, which is whatever you start the next year with as surplus. And you vote, and typically you're voting a year behind. And realize by the time you do budgeting, one of your other questions, by the time you do budgeting, you're comparing to a year that closed six or nine months ago, presenting it in a town report for a budget that starts three to six months from now. And your best wild-ass guess of what you're gonna do next year is based upon last year. And that's how you end up with- And that's how you end up with these budget numbers that really seem to skew. But in terms of ARPA, if that decision is to claim it all as lost revenue before June 30th, then at the end of 22, you will have a surplus equal to 50% of the ARPA money, because the other 50% comes in in July. And guess what you do with that? It's lost revenue. In the following year, you then can commit that as fund balance. The voters choose some article, what to do with that.
There is still, in the new guidelines, states very clearly that reporting is not mandated to the federal government, but it is mandated within your town to account for all money spent. So if Springfield allocated it all to water and sewer, well, that's fine. But they're gonna have to prove that they sent it to water and sewer, because at some point, you have to prove where you spent it. So to answer your question, you still are going to be reporting, you're just not gonna have to do it to the federal level. You're going to be doing it as we're doing it right now. We're taking in charitable accounts, and we're accounting for every dollar spent with the monies that we have spent so far, which is three projects. So yeah, I mean, it isn't like it's gonna get lost. It isn't like it is not gonna be in front of the taxpayers. And in fact, the town report should have its own charitable accounts of how that ARPA money was spent, and how it's been allocated. I, that's my feeling to it. And what they're saying very deeply in that very huge document.
My push-button style of accounting, I've asked Russ to give me a tally for each meeting. Like, the town's received half of those monies, as stated earlier, $447,000. We've got two projects that three we've paid for.
Three we've paid for.
Three we've paid for. I want to see those deducted from whatever those monies were, and each meeting I want to see that. So if somebody does question us, we can explain it to them as well as the select board.
So before, ideally, to get rid of every installment before the next, before the end of the fiscal year?
You don't have to, because...
It's a feel-good, yeah, definitely. We leave a lot of people at discussion points, feel better, for sure.
It's just gonna limit you to a bigger project that is possible. We don't have anything in mind, I'm just saying that a lot.
You can't use directly ARPA funds to supplement a federal project. But if you call it lost revenue, and it goes into fund balance, then you can use it to supplement a federal project.
Two things, and to finish my statement, my... We believe that our purpose as a committee, that you're charged, is to establish all projects that is of greater good, so good for the entire town. So it does not serve any one entity, or person, or business, for example. Because a business did actually come to us already. And we're pretty clear with them, I think, and he has a good understanding of how we feel with it. And secondly, that we will do, I will do, the best I can to give you all an example of the difference between the first ruling and the second ruling, why we favor one or the other. And that we're not real well prepared to do that.
Anything else, boards, commissions?
The town garage committee, we had a meeting, a couple now. The committee met at the town garage, they were all in agreement that we need to work into a different building. So Jason and I went around, looked at several town garages, I don't know how many, eight, all over. Ended up, we got plans from the one in Grafton, everybody liked it, kind of fit the bill. We're trying to come up with a proposal. We did find out that the corner of the property at the highway department is in fact owned by the state. The salt shed is in fact owned by the state. They've got it valued, the land in the building, at $110,000. We've got the deed from the town hall, and I forwarded that to Mark Pickering, the engineer for the state, he is Senate up north, and they're gonna come back to us with some kind of proposal, hopefully. Possibly we can purchase that at some point, so that we don't have our salt somebody else's building. Before we move forward on any other buildings or projects on that property, we should secure what we've got, I feel like. So that's where we're at. We're gonna have an open house from 10:00 to 2:00, April 9th, the Saturday, so folks can come. Hopefully, there'll be folks from the committee there. We've got a master plumber, a master electrician, an engineer, a couple of dirt guys, a couple of residents. So hopefully they'll be present, so if people have questions, it won't be just me, it'll be the actual professionals in the field, talking to the condition of the building, and what the... That's all you got?
I did. I'll take a motion to adjourn. Uh, update?
We have other business.
Oh, sorry. Okay, yep.
Greg, I'm gonna give it to you, so you can make the motion. Cemetery deed for the Regerio family.
I'll make a motion, then we go ahead and approve this allotment of quite a big section. It actually ends up being 12 spaces for Justin Regerio. It's in his name.
Yes, it is.
It's in Justin's Regerio name. It'll be 12 spots, I don't want to go over all where they are. Basically, it's in the cemetery.
That's correct.
So I'll make a motion, that we go ahead and grant it, at a total cost of $1,960.
Seconded. Motion's been moved and seconded, all of them, okay?
Aye.
Close?
While we're right there, Jeff, if they know Jeff passed away, he was only, not just a select person in town, but he gave a lot to this town. He'll be sold and missed, and what a great sense of humor. We'll put out our prayers for his family today. Thanks.
I'm sorry?
Yes.
Thank you for that, Greg, that was very nice.
Anything else under other business?
Date of next meeting, April 13th, 2022, town hall, 6:30. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
Move and seconded, all of them, okay?
Aye.